I don't have my gun. Is that an echo?
It is. Is, are you, are you, are you, somebody might not.
She's sweet. Is that okay? No?
No, no, no.
Are you?
Am I am? I've been careful.
I might so lose care of her.
Hello?
Yes, all our mics are muted though.
Yep, and everything is muted over here except for the ceiling.
It sounds better now.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I don't hear anything now. Okay, let's go. Okay, let's get started. It's August third, no?
Now we know who it is.
Is it you? Is it just me?
It's just you. Is it just you?
Right now, I just left the WebEx meeting.
Okay. Okay, let's get started.
Is it Echo?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, I'll have to figure out what's going on with WebEx. It's definitely coming from our WebEx.
Okay. Oh, because of Darlene?
No, the studios.
Okay. So it's August third, twenty twenty-two, time is four oh five. We have a full agenda in attendance, board members, Director Nelson, Director Jurgensen, Director Hart, Director Bankers, Director Meltakem. Director Daniels is joining us remotely. Director Loma should hopefully join us sometime soon. And we have a bevy of district personnel joining us, some new faces, some, uh, not old faces, I don't want to say the old faces. Some familiar faces. I'm sure we will get proper introductions in a few minutes. So welcome to One and All. It's good to see all of you. There is new energy when I'm talking about the people around the room and fresh excitement in the air. Beginning of the school year brings that all the time, so renewed hope and optimism. So especially after the past couple of years, when at the beginning of the school year, COVID issues were kind of front and central. And COVID is kind of still lurking, but at least we are not going to be, you know, talking about it upfront as we usually did the past couple of years at the beginning of the meeting. So hope all of you had a relaxing summer break, took some time off to spend with your family, recharge your batteries, kind of so to speak. You know, it's good to see all of my board colleagues back too. I missed you guys. It seems like in the spring, we spent so much time together, sometimes three times a week. And you become kind of like family, so it's good to see all of you back. But it's also good that we had some time off for about six weeks, not having to get ready for board meetings. And just for the record, Director Loma is joining us now, so. So, you know, I mean, having some time off for board members too, to just go about focusing on personal stuff and family stuff. And I certainly enjoyed that time off, not having to get ready for board meetings and prepare on a weekly basis, so. Yesterday, I stopped by for the first time in the admin building here after taking the whole month of July, I had to sign some paperwork for months or so. So I got to meet some of the new staff at that time, so. The time off was great, but we just have a busy year to get started, so. Let's get started and looking forward to a strong start to the academic year. So with that, the first item on the agenda today is the executive cabinet update. I want to start by welcoming Superintendent Goll. This is your first official board meeting.
Yes, thank you.
Hope your transition for the past month has gone well, and I know you've been busy hiring some new people in the staff and also settling in our community, so hope all that transition has gone on well and looks like you hit the ground running now, so. So over to you, introduce your cabinet and. Yeah, thank you.
Well, thank you to the board, thank you to the community, and thank you to the staff for the confidence for me to be here today. It's very exciting for my official, first official board event, especially live. I accepted the, the opportunity via distance Zoom, you know, a couple of months ago. I have been here in due diligence, working very hard since first of July, and the first order of business was to get the right team in place. And so if we can bring up the superintendent's org chart for those that are watching distantly, for me to be able to introduce our executive cabinet. First, I'd like to introduce to my right Ms. Tamara Acevedo, coming and joining us as the former deputy from Denver Public Schools Deputy for Instruction. Tamara comes recommended to me from about a dozen different people that I have met across all walks of my life, who have said to me, oh my gosh, you have to meet Tamara. We met several weeks ago and gone through the interview process, and she was the unanimous first choice by everyone on the committee to join us. We are super excited. We have very shared vision and experiences and know that we're going to really hit the ground running. And today is her official first day, so a big welcome to Tamara. And then I want to continue down as we look at the org chart there. I'm gonna skip the first block on the left, and then you'll see I already introduced Tamara, and then I'm having a tough time seeing that. Chris Odom, Chris, if you can wave to the owl or wherever we're doing this. Chris has been eagerly standing in my door for increased opportunity and responsibility within District Eleven since even my interview and orientation days. And in the, in the transition of Glenn Gustafson, Glenn Gustafson, back to his honorary retirement, Chris will be serving as the interim Chief Operations Officer. We do have an opportunity for Glenn to continue to support us behind the scenes and some coaching opportunities for both Chris and other members of the staff going forward. So we're super excited for Chris to be taking over that opportunity for us there. John, if you could give a wave to everybody, we'll continue as our Chief Information Officer. Phoebe, and you're over there, as our Chief of Personnel, Supports and Services. And over to Debra is over there as our Chief Communications Officer. And then David has been promoted to, where are you David? There you are, to Chief of Daddy, Data, Chief of Strategy and Data Acquisition. I just want to be clear that everyone sees continuity in that the executive cabinet there listed are all chiefs. We thought it was good that we name them and where I want their work to be. They are the leaders of their body of work and they bring it together to this executive decision-making body. They are not assistants of mine, they are chiefs of their work, and so hence the change in the name. I also want to introduce the five area superintendents who will report directly to my position as a superintendent. I thought it was critical that the community and the staff, and particularly our students, see that our focus this year is on supporting schools. And that will come first and foremost by those agents and principal managers reporting directly to me as a superintendent. And so we have Dr. Scott Mendelsburg, who will be joining and taking over all things alternative, CTE, opportunity and charter oversight. And then we have divided the former executive directors of school leadership into area superintendents and made them regional. There'll be a slide that I'll show here at the end of a slideshow that I'll show that, but I'll give their geographic responsibility. I'm gonna do them as I see them, not as they're listed, since that screen has disappeared. So Brian will be leading our central, generally our Palmer's area. Brandon will be leading the west, the Coronado area. And I have, there you are Darren. Darren will be leading the northeast, the Dougherty community. And then Sherry, callback, I want to acknowledge for her strength in leading as the interim deputy superintendent through so many transitions. Will be taking on our, our southeast, our Mitchell cluster down there. Okay, so that is our executive cabinet. If I could get the slideshow up next.
You may want to introduce your administrative assistant.
Yeah, what's that? Oh, and I'm sorry, and Shawna Kurtz has joined as my administrative assistant. I could not be more happy than to have Shawna on the team. We had an incredibly qualified pool of candidates. Shawna brought two things that I want everyone to hear that were real stage setters for me. First of all, she understands customer service in a decade of time at USAA. And anybody who's a USAA member knows that every time you call them, you feel like you're talking to your grandmother, even though they don't really know who you are. I know that there's a matrix and I know that you always feel like you're getting the highest level of support. And secondly, Shawna knows schools. She was the administrative assistant for the school leadership team last year. And so as I am learning the community and I say, oh, I ran by Steel Elementary School, it's beautiful, I need to meet the principal, and she knows exactly who that is and sets it up immediately. So we're not learning together, she already knows schools, and most of my focus will be down and in to ensure that schools are getting within you. Thank you, Dr. Meltakem. This slideshow, I wanted to go over just a high-level strategy that everybody understands that will be driving much of what you see that happens over time, over the next. You're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna pull it up for a little bit, so. John's gonna take care of it for you. But let me, while we're doing that, I'll share just a story about customer service. This week, we had a small COVID outbreak in our enrollment office. And we were following the protocols and we were watching, and for a moment there, it looked like we were gonna have to close the enrollment office, which is an oxymoron as we are two weeks before school starts and a district that has been dealing with decreasing enrollment. And what we saw was empowered leaders who came up with solutions that found unexposed members of the enrollment team who could literally put a table outside of the enrollment office, and it happened to be a nice day, and be able to enroll families outside of the building instead of saying, well, somebody got exposed, sorry, enrollment's closed. And so I just want to acknowledge Melissa's, was part of that crowd, Melissa Andrews. Natasha Kraus is your last name? Are both here under David's leadership, and both Brian and and Shawna get real credit for actually pulling the trigger on that, because I love when people tell me what they did instead of asking me what they can do, and that's how that one went down. Are we getting closer over in the corner?
Yeah, we're almost there.
We are almost there. I want to give a real shout out for the city of Colorado Springs, and it's just been such a welcome return for me. I'm all settled in, I live downtown. There's so much to do downtown. If you haven't been downtown, get there. It's just a lot of fun. I, I can't go out for a bite to eat without seeing somebody that recognizes me or the District Eleven logo. And there's so much energy in the city right now around District Eleven that it's just a real, really fun time to be in downtown and seeing all the great things that are happening. And what else can I tell you? So as we get ready to bring this slideshow up, what it's really built upon, it's, it's on the main theme that I wanted this year to be about, which is rebuilding trust. I have noticed during my interview and even in my first four weeks here, that there have been challenges in trust both inter and intra-district. And that the first thing I want everyone to see is that we are and will be the strongest stewards of both the dollar and the intent of how we instruct our children going forward. And you've heard my language of not meeting children's potential, but exceeding their potential. And so one of the things I wanted to do was to structure my cabinet in a way that was going to be consistent with building trust. And now I can see screens are moving, so we're getting excited. Ah, here we go.
She's a miracle worker.
Everyone. So the first thing I use as an example, and I, you'll see that I have a whiteboard in my office, I draw all the time. I draw a big circle and I tell you that it's six feet across and that the average person is five foot six inches tall. So when I ask Steve or Sally, can you lean in and cover that hole? Can we get a build there? Shawna, do you want to drive this? Because you've seen how it goes. If I ask Steve or Sally to lean in and cover the hole, what happens is is because they're not wide enough or tall enough, they just fall into the hole. This move's so much better when it's not on board dots. Live and learn.
That'd work better if it was just in PowerPoint.
Okay, there we go. We're just gonna scroll. So covering, covering a hole by yourself is an impossible task, is the lesson learned. So keep rolling down. But if we lean in together, I'm following Director Ots moving faster, I like it. If we lean in together, we kind of get that Wonder Power Twins activate, and we all engage our superpower. And you can see we have students at the top, a scholar at the top of that. So the idea here is to get off of our heels and to get on our toes, and then lean in together and rebuild that trust together as a system. Go ahead, keep scrolling. Trust, when you see it, when I've worked in a couple of organizations that were partnered with an org, a nonprofit called Great Places to Work. And they have a trust index. And what they found, they did about twenty or twenty-five different school districts at the time, and trust index was highest in the highest performing classrooms. That shouldn't be a surprise to anyone, that when the student and teacher relationship is strong, you will get quality learning happening at that time. Go ahead, roll it down. And then, when you see principals that treat their teachers the same way that teachers treat their students, and it is rooted in trust, you can get strong growth at a building level. We've all seen good examples of strong buildings, and again, they had the highest trust index according to Great Places to Work. Scroll down again. And then the challenge then becomes, area superintendents are sometimes able to manage that to principals. But according to the data at Great Places to Work, they had yet to seen an administration that had a high trust index with their principal managers or area superintendents. We all know that we get feedback that says, central office doesn't understand the needs of schools. And so the first free move is how do we lean central office into a way where we are seen, are seen as being supportive and understanding the needs of schools? Again, all the way back to the classroom, a teacher who differentiates, individualizes and personalizes the learning opportunity for a student will see growth. So how does central office do the same thing through the area superintendent in regards to schools? Scroll down. Okay, so this again had a nice animation built to it, but the idea here is, is this is a traditional org chart. It's a mess. There are more names and boxes on here than any one school can navigate. A really strong principal is very good at understanding who to call to get things done. We put the responsibility on principals to navigate our chaos. And so when we had an animation that built on this, it went from the student to the teacher to the principal, to the former etzel, all the way up to administration, and then all the way back down. And maybe that was just, we need more number two pencils for the state test. That takes too long for us to be able to get to the needs of schools. Let's scroll. So let's go to a site-centered model, and we can just stay here, that it's fine that it doesn't build. We already, as a district, have a very strong understanding of the needs of the schools. The One Plan Symposium is a wonderful personalized solution for how the state looks at the UIP. I've gotten strong feedback, there are still opportunities for us to grow, but principals like the One Plan Symposium. It gives them their major improvement strategy to focus on. But how do we realize the resources that we need to get there? If I went back to that traditional model, it just takes too long to get the work done. So we engage the area superintendents, and when you look at this, I want you to think of a high school combination lock. If, how many of us remember, you gotta go right, you gotta go left, and then you gotta go right again. First of all, no two locks have the same combination. But if you do the right amount of right, the right amount of left, and the minor amount of right again, your locker opens up. And so the school at the center with the One Plan, the principal relationship with the area superintendent is the first dial to the right. Area superintendents know their clusters, know their One Plans, and will each have access to their own coach and access to the needs of the operational side of the organization, they dial to the right. A performance-level school probably doesn't need that much touch, so it will be done. Now I gotta dial back to the left. What if I need content expertise? What if I need special ed? What if I need procurement to come in and do a deeper dive at that school? Area superintendent dials that in specifically to the needs of that school based upon the One Plan. And then all the way back to the right again, now we're in a priority improvement or turnaround school. That's where we all wrap around the needs of the school. If I were to ask most people in the audience today or listening, which are our priority improvement schools? Can you list them, and can you tell me the principals, and you can tell me the staffing, and you can tell me their major improvement strategy? The answer is probably no, we can't do that. We need to be able to do that, and that's site-centered. We can't make that three-dial move if we don't all know how we want to align those resources for it. Next build. And then the idea here is that if each school is known, and then you build it down again, of course, the word own is within known. Then we can own our own outcomes. We can no longer be voyeurs to our own failures and our own shortcomings. Central office will engage itself and lean into schools as directed by the, the recipe of the superintendents. Okay, next build. This is the way the areas lay out. Most of you know a lot more about Colorado Springs than I do, and so this makes sense. They are loosely based upon high school clusters. This is not a mandate that there are feeders. It doesn't mean that if you went to Jenkins, you have to go to Dougherty. But we did feel that it was important that neighborhoods and communities were represented by area superintendents who saw continuity throughout that system. And we think that'll communicate more strongly with our customers, which are our students and our parents. And then the red circles, of course, then fall under our fifth area superintendent, Dr. Mendelsburg, which will be all things charters, CTE and alternative. And I think that is a great way to introduce where we hope to be able to go this year. Any questions or comments on that?
Okay. Any questions from both?
No, I see Dan.
Thank you.
Great, next item.
Okay, is that all?
That's it, my executive cabinet update. And how we'll push our strategy.
Well, I like a comment, one comment.
Yeah, go ahead.
I wanna steal this. We can no longer be voyeurs of our own failures. Thank you very much.
Okay, you're welcome.
I, I guess I do.
Yeah, go ahead.
So on the slide that says own on it, it has operational manager with question marks. And I'm not sure, is that a position or is that a job responsibility within that first circle?
Yeah, so we're still in design. What we've been able to do is we've been able to assign an instructional coach per area superintendent at no additional cost to the district. What I'm working with is with interim COL Chris Odom to determine how it is that we get a regionalized relationship for the area superintendents to understand the operational needs. I don't want principals having to make phone calls to get operational supports in their schools. I want the area superintendents to help be responsible for that. So the question mark is, is that hasn't been staffed and finalized yet? We're still in the design.
So when you're talking about operational, you're talking about facilities?
I'm talking about all things facilities, procurement, transportation, food services, all the things that fall on the ops side of the house. Principals need to be focused on their One Plan and improving instruction for us to get best first instruction in place to ensure that students can reach and exceed their academic potential.
So are you envisioning that as another chief of?
Not another chief, it would likely be somebody that is on the area superintendent's team. It could be repurposed roles that are already within the system. I'm trying to make what I call the best first free move. The idea here is not to add staff, it's for schools to feel the supports of existing staff more closely related to the school. So I'll have to get back on that one still.
Okay, thank you.
So, any other questions or comments? I do have a couple of feedbacks to provide you. I like what you have, how you've designed it, and so now in the people that report directly to you, the area superintendents report to you directly?
Yes.
In, in the way that it's structured?
Yes.
Okay, and the rest of the people report to the chiefs under each departments, and the chiefs report to you?
Yes.
That's the way?
Yes.
So that exec cabinet is all the people that are in that first org chart, including the area superintendent?
That's correct.
Great, okay. Just for clarity, that's good to know, who report to you and what that chain of?
So that's got me right at my max there, because ten to twelve is about the span of control that anyone can expect.
Yeah.
But I want to be crystal clear that the focus this year is down and in to ensure that we're getting schools where they need to be, the supports that they need to get where they need to be.
Okay. Perfect, and the other comment or feedback that I have is one thing that I often hear is communication breakdowns as it is going forth from the board to the superintendent and down the line. By the time it reaches the school-level building, it seems to be the communication and the message is distorted.
That's right.
Hopefully now with the way that it's structured, we have consistent, clear communication going down through that chain. Okay, that's a feedback that we often hear, and it's often reflected, e- even in that orgometric score. We don't do well in that communication, so hopefully we, if you need to over-communicate as you go along to our schools, to our act, to our parents too, do so. Just want to make sure that the message that is starting from this room, as it enters our school building, is consistent and clear.
Thank you, and so part of the design here is to be as flat as possible. And so you'll see that there's only one step in between the superintendent and principals, which are the area superintendents who report directly to me, who I have found to be incredibly strong, and that's the bet here. Is that if we can move schools through principal management, through the area superintendents, we can deliver on the first two asks of the board priorities under my tenure, which is academic performance and enrollment.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Going on to the next agenda item is an update on the Siskiysentennial Celebration Plans.
And I said right?
Yeah.
That's perfect.
That's a mouthful.
Debra?
Thank you. We have just over a week, a week and one day, week and a few hours before we kick off a very monumental school year for the district. A hundred and fifty years, and we're very excited. We've got a lot of plans in place for the event that will be taking place at Gary Berry Stadium on August eleventh, six to eight P M. We have pushed that out from every venue avenue that I can imagine possible to get the word out, including out to our special guests with special invitations. And so I wanted to bring up who our special guests from City Council who have RSVP'd to let us know that they will be there. That is Tom Strand, Wayne Williams, Dave Donaldson, Yolanda Avila and Stephanie Fortune. They have RSVP'd that they will be there. We did invite Mayor John Suthers, but he will be out of town that day. We've also invited former board members that we have contact information for, some of them we don't have contact information for. And those who have indicated to me that they'll be there and RSVP'd to me are Eileen Naleski, Nora Brown, Teresa and Bob Knoll, Jan Tanner, Lyman Kaiser and Luann Long. If there are others though, this is where I'm gonna ask for your help. If there are others who have said to you that they're coming and I don't have them on my list, I don't know what I don't know, and I'd love to announce them there. Please do encourage them to let me know, or you can shoot me an email and let me know as well. If there are other dignitaries in our community who need to be involved, please let me know. We've also invited former superintendent Dr. Nicholas Gudich and his wife Nora, as well as the Colorado Springs Chamber and EDC, Camille Levon will be representative from the chamber. We invited Kyle Hibble from Almar, but he is unable to attend. So those are the people on our list. I'm happy to share this list with the board. We've shared it with the superintendent. But we're excited, we've got twenty-three schools that have indicated they will be there with interactive activities and booths that they'll be set up. We have student performances and a stage that will be there for student performances from some of our dance teams, Mitchell JROTC Drill Team, some of our change. uh, some of our chamber choirs, uh, string quartets and uh other activities on the stage as well. We've got giveaways from some uh generous donors in our community. Some prize giveaways from some of the restaurants in town that we're excited to uh do a raffle and give those uh away uh on on the hour, every hour. Uh, we will be giving away um eight of those prize giveaways, so it'll be more frequent than that. We've got opportunities for you to take a step back in time and get pictures taken in front of some of our historic backdrop pictures up here, uh, some of which will have a a cutout, so you can put your face through and look like you were in a classroom uh back in the day. We've got students who will be dressed in period clothing and they'll be doing a costume fashion show uh through the ages. And so um we're just very excited for a great uh turnout. We have food trucks that are going to be available for food for purchase just outside of Gary Berry Stadium on Glen Summer Road. And uh five of those food trucks, um, one of which is uh an alumni food truck, so that's great to know too. So um just a great event for our community. Uh, and I will wrap it up there for questions.
Actually, the question is for um Chris. We have a fun balanced task force on the August eleventh, so can we reschedule?
I thought that's being rescheduled.
And we have, and I'm sorry I didn't get it out to all the board. I I will, it's been rescheduled to August ninth.
Okay.
I believe it's from two to four.
Oh, good, okay.
We saw that conflict. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm just curious about the sponsors and what their part is in.
Absolutely. So we've reached out to sponsors um that have been that have partnered with the district before and have um indicated that they uh would like to mo- contribute monetarily to our costs. So we have gold level, bron- uh, gold level, silver level, bronze level and nonprofits. And right now it looks like we've got thirteen um sponsors. Uh, they'll have booth opportunities at the um at the event. They'll also have an announcement made and their uh logos put up on the uh digital board at the stadium. Uh, we asked for logos to be able to put those logos into all of our promotional materials. Some of those logos we got, some of those logos we didn't, so we went with what we had, but uh they are, um, a lot of the sponsors have worked with us before, some are new to us. Uh, but they're working through our partnership program with Landa Cleba.
Can you read off your list?
I sure can.
Sorry.
That's okay. So we have, uh, and not all of these have um been finalized, but we are working on finalizing them right now. Academy Kids Dental, Assistance League of Colorado Springs, AX Equitable, CPCD, El Paso Council C uh PTA, Foundation for School District eleven, Girl Scouts of Colorado, Shorewood Real Estate, NAMI, NTA Life, Pathway to the Rockies VSA, Soccer Hoss and YMCA of the Pike's Peak Region.
And are um, you said they help cover the cost of the event, so are we fully covered or are we still pulling out of our own budget?
Uh, at, we're still working through the totals um of everything. Uh, I think we're we're doing pretty well. We've got I'd say uh half of our our budget covered right now.
Yeah, great.
Do you want um county commissioners, uh, who is in this area?
You know, the county commissioners for this area would be more than welcome. Yes, thank you. Anybody's welcome.
So I know that several of the board members have contacts with elected representatives too, so please reach out to people that you know in your circles. Feel free to invite them to this event. And if they are going to be attending, share their names with uh Deborah so we can recognize them on that evening. While they're there.
Deborah, can we invite the neighboring superintendents as well? Who, who would invite for me?
We sure can, yeah.
Are we still accepting more um sponsors or is it?
Sponsors uh have closed for uh, yeah, August first was our deadline, so.
That's nice, in case people asked.
Yeah.
Well, I like the sponsor, oh, sorry.
If they wanna contribute, that's great.
Yeah, I wanna thank Deborah and the committee. And I wanna be clear that this is the first day of a three hundred and sixty-five day celebration of our hundred and fiftieth year. So this is not a flash in the pan. You will see we have a logo, we've got some special collateral. We will be doing a hundred and fifty examples of excellence over the next three hundred and sixty-five days to celebrate what it means to be the Colorado Springs School District eleven um and remind people that we are the heart of the city. So we're super excited for this kickoff event at Gary Berry Stadium and we'll see everybody there on the eleventh.
Get there early for parking. It's like a football game, so.
Right. Go ahead, Jason.
So I know that we're always really working hard to establish good relationships with the neighbors around Gary Berry.
Yeah.
Have we done any extra?
Yes.
Like a flyer or handouts or games?
We are putting door hangers. Um, at the start of the football season, we usually do, so um on the flip side of that door hanger, we're inviting them to our hundred and fiftieth and letting them know that we're having that event. And then on that flip side, we're letting them know the homecoming, I mean, football games and the schedule.
Okay, cool.
Yeah.
Good plan.
I I was going to ask about additionally events, so I appreciate that it's not just one event and over, or at least one concept. So given how hard you worked on this, I'm just curious, are there other events through the year?
Yeah, our team is talking about, so we have a task force. Um, they've uh thrown out a lot of different ideas. And uh in September, we're aiming to do a time capsule type of event. And uh we're hoping in October to do a D eleven, we we call them ghost tours, but D eleven legacy tours of uh, you know, significant individuals in cemeteries around our community that we can tour and partner with uh the local cemeteries. Uh, in November, we're going to do a social media push for alumni to uh reach out and uh use our hashtag and say what they're thankful for and what D eleven helped them to achieve in their lives. Um, and we're still planning for uh additional things throughout the year.
Thank you.
Yes.
Great. As in when some of those events get finalized, you can share with the board and uh if you have some information to share next week, you can do that at the event too. And I'm assuming Superintendent Gaul, you're going to be addressing the crowd that day or?
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay.
Give me a chance to talk.
Yeah, absolutely. Let's uh set your mission and vision, so to speak, and uh address the crowd. Do we have a rough estimate or how many people are going to show up?
I don't.
Yeah. But this is not uh a mandatory event for schools or principals to attend.
No, uh, we're just hopeful that people will be motivated by the one time that we turn a hundred and fifty years old, that we get to celebrate kicking the year off.
This is a big event, you know, I mean, thinking about it, District eleven has been around as long as Colorado Springs was established as a town.
Yeah.
Colorado Springs started in eighteen seventy-one and District eleven was eighteen seventy-two. And uh I was sharing with uh Superintendent Gaul, I was at Yellowstone um uh at the end of July and coincidentally Yellowstone turned hundred and fifty years this year. And so I was just thinking about how cool that is. Yellowstone is the first national park in the world. And that's hundred and fifty years old and District eleven is hundred and fifty years old and uh just to know that District eleven has been there as long as Yellowstone has been a national park. And the number of students that we impacted over those years. Uh, it's an awesome mystery that we need to celebrate uh not only next week, but throughout the year as much as possible. And I'm glad that we are inviting dignitaries and board members, uh, the names that I didn't see are the recent board that uh stepped away, so maybe we can reach out. We've got contacts to Jim Mason and that group up there, so we can reach out to some of those people and see if they can be there.
Maybe you could uh have somebody figure out how many graduates we've had.
Yeah, I I think, yeah, I think we have that number.
I, you don't look at me, but we will reach back in our archives and uh top our new archives director.
Yeah, yeah, we can. Any other questions on, uh, I want to thank you again, like what Superintendent Gaul, that you and your task force and team, you've been working throughout the summer and the logo that you guys came up with. Just great work and phenomenal work putting this together and getting the word out into the community. And all the things that you're going to do in the coming months too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sounds like it's gonna be fun. Sounds exciting.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Good work. Thank you, we really appreciate it. I would like to give kudos um while I can. The logo was designed by a gentleman by the name of Craig Decker. He is actually Doherty High School's girls' foot uh soccer coach, so.
Huge shout out for the logo.
Yeah, that's awesome, yeah. Uh, that looks really appealing and uh okay, moving on. The next item on the agenda is we are going to talk a little bit about the bond issue. Okay. Let's pass this on. So to set this up and provide some context, um uh, we had an initial discussion about this bond subject matter as a board, I think in May. Um, last year, uh, in twenty twenty-one, District eleven had a bond initiative on the ballot after recounts. Uh, the measure did not pass. I think it was just a handful of votes that we needed. And then um uh going back to the discussion that we had in May, we have deferred uh capital maintenance projects and uh building renovations that if I'm right, Terry exceeds eight hundred million dollars or so. Um and the bond debt that we have, we are going to be paying on the bond debt by the end of December this year, so we would be debt free in that regard. Am I so far good with that, Chris? Okay, so um and in May, we talked about the pros and cons of going for a bond initiative this November again. We looked at various options. One of the options we discussed was going for a smaller bond, about hundred and ten million dollars, and then we wouldn't call it a tax increase. Uh, we would just go as far as the mill mills that we are going to be de- defeating about that or go for a larger bond, four hundred or five hundred million, which would be a tax increase. We discussed whether we need to attach some performance uh metrics to the bond initiative. Uh, we also talked to the admin at the time about uh doing a polling in the community. Then in early July, I reached out to the entire board to discuss this subject matter with you individually. I think if I recall, I talked to all or most of you or all that got back to me. Uh, Glenn also put together an email uh discussing the pros and cons of going for a bond this November. Uh, after reading that email and discussing that topic with each of you, the collective of the board at that time was the current environment was not conducive for going for a bond initiative this November. So I I shared that with the admin and we also could put the polling on hold. We don't need to do a polling if we are not going to go for a bond. Um, now we are going to take a few minutes to um wrap up that conversation and then um we have a timeline uh that uh we can provide some feedback on to Superintendent Gaul and the team. If we are interested as a board in exploring going for a bond initiative in November of twenty twenty-three, which would be a year from now. So this is the timeline. We can look at it, provide some guidance to Terry and the and the maintenance team, to the operations team. Uh, so they can prepare the information for the board and present it, what the board needs in early spring. And uh if we as a board uh decide at that time, then we can go for a bond of for November next year. With that, I'll turn it over to Chris Odom or Superintendent Gaul.
Chris has got it here. You summarized it. This is just a a milestone's timeline uh for the board to digest as as we continue the dialogue and understand what's the right time for us, and I'll let Chris cover some of those highlights.
Thank you, Superintendent Gaul. Well, good evening. Welcome back, board. It's nice to see you. So the intent of this document, and it has been revised, uh, the first two columns on the left were updated. This is the correct version up on the board and and the handout. What I'm hoping you can take away from this timeline is that the first two columns are really the biggest key to get this going forward. Between now and December of this year, now is that time for the board to have conversation with the administration team, Terry Seaman, Superintendent Gaul, about what you would like to see done, how to scope it and how to size it. Once you figure that out, we'd like for that to be finalized about January timeframe. From January to April is where we really need to, once you've scoped it and sized it, we need to get out and talk about it to the PTAs, to our communities, to the Saks and get feedback on it. See if there's anything that needs to change or be updated. And then everything else, May, June, is what we've historically experienced. There's um not a lot of new information. In May, we're gonna look at and discuss, do you wanna poll this? And in June, that's when we would do that. And then in August, you would follow, start following all the election calendar dates. We took a stab at guestimating those dates. It hasn't been published, so these are tentative estimated timelines. But once you vote in August, that's when the Fair Campaign Practices Act kicks in and it starts with the non-action meeting. And the D E O and expert on that is Ms. Phoebe Bailey. I don't wanna speak on behalf of that, but so that's the timeline to talk and to get out in the community. So that's the main purpose. Um, just to give you a little taste of scoping, at the bottom left, if you could scroll down please on the screen, so I can see in the bottom left, there's a a square block. This is just information at this point in time. If the bond size, if you said, we know we have eight hundred million in capital needs, but if you said uh, we feel the appetite is maybe three hundred and fifty million, what this is telling you is the property tax mills at this point in time on a five percent coupon rate is about six point nine mills. Just to give you some perspective, in two thousand and six, we issued approximately a hundred and thirty million dollars in bonds and it was about that same rate. But over the years, we've been able to refund. That's like re um we're we're able to reduce the interest rate and save the taxpayers dollars. So that's why right now we're at one point seven or two point one in our interest rate, so our mills. Does that make sense? So we started out big with our mills and we were able to skinny it down over the years. And that opportunity over twenty-five years usually occurs once and that's all we can recall them for is one time. Or refund them for is one time. So that's really all I wanted to let you know on this timeline. Um, you'll just have to let us know what the right fit is and we'll, yes, sir.
Can you break down what the would the average cost?
For a two hundred thousand dollar home in the?
Per, yeah.
Yes, we can. We can do that.
Sure, you can find those.
I don't even two hundred thousand anymore, but.
Yes, sir. We, yes, we could absolutely do that.
Yeah.
I don't know it off the top of my head. I
Sure.
but I will get that for you. Thank you.
This is great, this timeline. I love this for
I can't take credit for it, but thank you.
We just uh, it's very helpful. I am a big fan of timelines for future work that we're doing. I think they're immensely helpful in making sure we have a plan in place and this is cle- clearly a plan and I uh, maybe we have seen something like this with previous work, but not to my recollection, so.
We wanna make sure that the products that we share in work sessions and at board meetings are digestible to everyone that watches and not expect everyone to understand our language, so that was the task. Hats off to Glenn. He uh was the the master of this. But the task was, um, again, I'm new to Colorado Springs, so if if you can't explain it to me, it doesn't go on board docs and so.
I like that.
So have you ever resolved um how we're paying for maintenance over time? Coming in new to the board, it's uh, and I don't think the public understands when we float a bond issue that it's gonna go into infrastructure and not into student achievement. Um, and I think that's a real gap that we need to reconcile.
So to me, that's why I think it's important that we have the opportunity to share with the community. Once you decide, we get out there and explain it. And I think that is really important, that the community hears the message.
I don't think we as a board have come to some sort of a uh consensus on on how maintenance gets paid for. If we are so far in arrears on maintenance to keep our buildings drawing and the only way we can fund it, from what I understand, is with a bond issue.
Right, right.
Um, is that really the direction in which we wanna go? And that comes back to um where our priorities are, which is student achievement. And at the And at the same time, in order for morale and for student climate, teacher climate, parent climate within the building, you can't have air conditioning breaking. You can't have, um, something on the roof leaking and the water coming down through two classrooms year after year. Um, so I think a conversation needs to happen amongst the board and, and the administration about how is it that we're going to allocate dollars? And yes, we all understand eighty-five percent of our, our budget goes to salary and we want to make sure that, excuse me, employees are taken care of. It's a, it's a complex conversation that needs to take place. And I, I don't know, we do that in a work session or if we do it over multiple times. Or, but it needs to come out now if we're going to have a discussion about a bond issue. I want to have that sort of kind, that sort of overview before we start going to the public and asking for more money. Because if you talk to, um, some folks, they'll say, you know, the district always wants money. And I, some of you may know that in the library district, I don't know about you, but I love our library district. It's going to go back to, um, the community and ask for money. And you know that the zoo is, um, asking for money. And so these lovely, enriched, uh, organizations, the library and the zoo, are critical to who we, in my view, are critical to who we are. And yet, those bonds are very difficult to pass for them. So when we look at our schools and we look at how we're going to fund and keep our buildings in a.
You're on a touchy subject, though.
It just thundered for people watching online.
Hopefully it doesn't start to hate.
Yeah, well, it does have a flat roof, so, you know, water, anyway. So I'm thinking in terms of the board having, uh, with administration, a conversation about allocation of funds. How are we going to, um, I don't, I don't want to say change, but evolve. How are we going to evolve from waiting until something breaks down and then we go ahead and fix it to a maintenance plan that keeps our bu- buildings functioning? And that has so many different threads in that topic that it's going to take time to really bring that together and give us time to think it through.
I do want to, you, you, to the board, you'll get an update this evening and the back to school update on some of the strong facilities work that has happened out of our O and M dollars in our ability to keep our buildings safe, functional, and ready for school. There is certainly a much larger need, as communicated by the existing FMP. Uh, that needs a, a refresh based upon some of the changes, uh, in the economy and in some of the directions that we want to head. And this timeline gives us a chance to do it. So I think, uh, we should, uh, maybe project that we come back in the, once we get through school opening, maybe in September, October, and, um, come up with that plan and start to put some ideas out there on, on how the board wants to move forward in tackling some of those larger issues.
Yeah, we kind of had this discussion in the past in budget subcommittees and it always comes down to like what you said, that direct impact. Because that eighty-five percent of our general budget money is tied into school, uh, personal salaries. And so we have a limited amount of dollars. I think there is some MLOV override money that's going into, uh, facility maintenance. And I think we set aside, is it twenty million dollars or so?
Between the general fund and the MLO, it's about twenty.
Twenty million per year.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so that we use, but that is just a drop in the bucket compared to our needs, what we have in the long term. Um, uh, it seems like it's a perpetual problem, not only for our district, but throughout the state of Colorado, the way uh, school funding is financed. That most generally, other school districts also go to their community with a bond initiative to, to maintenance thing. The bigger problem is, the good thing is that District eleven is seventy fifty years old. But the bad thing is that District eleven is seventy fifty years old. And with that comes, some of our buildings have fifty, sixty, seventy years old. And that's where some of the maintenance, uh, issues come up. So, yeah, it, it's a discussion that we need to have.
In that conversation, because I agree with everything you said, um, but we have several half-filled schools. Um, and some of them are so old they're not worth fixing. And we just got to lay on the table. And so that has to be part of the conversation. Now, uh, the community not going to like it, but, you know, that could be part of the bond discussion. While you, you don't like it, but if you don't, if you don't come up with the money, then that's, you know, it's almost like a, a limit that you hate to use, but it's a reality. So you can't, you can't avoid that discussion. We're, we're going around half-full schools, half-filled buses, half-filled everything. And they all play a part in academic achievement, all of them. But there are schools who've never had an air conditioning and they're flying high. So sometimes that's an excuse for their failure. But that, that has to be part of the discussion.
Yeah, and, uh, just not going this November and having a plan maybe to go next November, this gives Superintendent Gaul and this team to also get some time to focus on academic growth, achievement, and the student things. And then we can go back to our community with the results that we want to, you know, that we are, uh, using the taxpayers' dollars that they have assigned to us right now to demonstrate that, that, that gives us some time to, um, uh, hopefully go for this bond. It is a necessity. I think we may have to do that. Or we'll have to talk about other issues. Do we have too many schools that are open? But, uh, you know, hopefully we don't have that. And, uh, student enrollment is tied into all that. Um, uh, the couple of suggestions that I would have is that, uh, if we are going for it next year, we may as well go for a bigger amount of money. Um, and that's what we need to, I mean, a hundred and ten million dollars is not going to suffice. If we are going to go there, then it's going to be more closer to the three fifty or the four fifty million dollars that we need. And then Terry and this team would have to figure out what are the critical need projects between now and December that needs to be addressed, so we can present that to the community in early January, February. So we have a complete list. These are the projects that we want. So if we can work on that over the next three, four months, identify some of those critical need projects and have a plan, uh, before the board.
Absolutely. We'll take that on.
Yeah, by early, um, spring. Uh, and then if we, as a board finalize that in the timeline, maybe we can engage the polling firm even by end of April. So the polling can be completed in May as opposed to going during the summertime and doing polling when people are going to be in summer planning modes, vacation mode. So if we can co- complete the polling in May, then the board can even look at the polling data by early June and before we break for summer break, come to a, um, conclusion or come to a, a result that we can provide to the board, uh, provide to the administration, we are going for a bond or we are going to not. So then we can engage, um, uh, a, what do you call that, uh, a team, that goes, a campaign team, uh, that they can hire over the, um, over the summer, so we can hit the crowd running. So maybe that timeline could be pushed a little bit further out.
Yeah, so we'll adjust the timeline with some actions in there as a takeaway from the meeting. And the first will be Terry to re-scope the, um, the FMP at a couple of different option levels. And then we'll bring that back to the board.
Okay.
And I'll work with Marisol on that date for a work session, likely into September or October.
Okay.
I got to get to school.
Something I've been wondering about is, I'm going to back this up even a little bit from this timeline, weighing the pros and cons of going for a bond next year versus in two years. I mean, do we want to tie it to, there'll be school board elections happening again in twenty twenty three versus twenty twenty four is a presidential election. Will we have better turnout of people voting? I'm not an expert in this area, so just, does it buy us anything to even wait a year? Would our likelihood of it passing be, you know, would, would we see benefit in waiting till a presidential election year? Just one thought I've been wondering about. So I don't know how we get the answer to that, but maybe we can back up a little and weigh some pros and cons on twenty twenty three versus even twenty twenty four.
And I think, uh, added to that is the state of the economy.
Yeah, giving more time.
And where we are, uh, a year from now.
Yeah, all that will kind of play into the narrative. Uh, we can discuss all that as we go along in December and January. But if we have a tentative list of these are the projects, then we can have that discussion and see where the economy is six months from now, seven months from now.
And then for the polling company and, uh, campaign, um, management, is that an RFP that people? And then is that a task force that you create so that we go over it? Or do you make the decision? How is that decision made?
For the, um, the polling, what they'll want to do, we'll issue a solicitation, and I did it in June. And it usually can get done, uh, within a three to four week period at the latest, where a team is selected or a company is selected. And then that polling company will come and work with the board on the questions.
My question is that, that who determines who's going to get hired to do the work?
The board.
Um, it, it could be the superintendent. It could be a small group of district staff.
And I have an interest in who's going to get hired.
Okay.
Both for the polling and for the campaign management.
Okay.
We can have that discussion when we get, when we get closer to.
Well, now we know that I'm interested.
That's good.
I'm, I'm interested that you're interested.
I just, I want to, um, echo my president, Mel Packham, shared also about getting that, um, priority list of that eight hundred million, what that includes and what our heavy hitters would be in that list. I know you've presented to us in the past, well, I was gonna say recently, but, you know, recent, if you don't have one for the break. Um, I remember some of the things being security vegetables, you know, that's definitely important. So an understanding of what is maintenance versus what are maybe improvements and security related versus nice to haves. And I'm going to use an example of updating our kitchens for our CTE programs to all be stainless steel refrigerators. I mean, y'all would love to have a stainless steel refrigerator, but if it's not broken, you know, is it a necessity, I guess? So kind of getting an understanding of, uh, the nice to haves versus the need to haves and the security, you know, breaking it out that way, I would find.
And that is very subjective on what's nice to have versus need to have. Because what you and I may think of as, uh, a nice to have, maybe programmatically, they may see it as a must-have to upgrade, uh, you said refrigerator to, to stainless. Well, you know, there's, if they need a refrigerator, do we do the, the less, least expensive option to upgrade the refrigerator? Or do we do one that's going to last longer and require fewer maintenance calls? So there's, there's a fine line between the subjective nature of the nice to haves to the must haves.
I guess I was thinking in terms of like the white panel of the front of the refrigerator versus the stainless. You know, that's not functional necessarily.
And I will take whatever board input that we get on priorities, as well as the superintendent's priorities. And we'll, we'll do the best we can to come up with requirements.
And we may decide we want stainless, but it just will help me to get an understanding of when we say eight hundred million, what are we talking about?
We'll tier the options.
If I can just point out, a lot of this work has already been done with the facilities master plan that we had looked at for a year ago, and it had input from the community. So Terry's not starting out from scratch. And so if anybody's curious about that, I would say you could start there until he gets us his upgraded information.
And so I have put on my list of priorities to refresh the facilities master plan to be consistent with the strategies of which match the board priorities. Uh, it is a really strong starting position. However, it needs to be updated based upon current conditions in the economy and on this idea of new strategy and alignment and coherence within this. So we have a really strong starting point. We will come back to the board with some tiered options that will meet Director Bankus's comments of how do we actually get out from underneath some of this? Um, and is it, uh, how much of it is normal O and M dollars as compared to an ask of the community? And then that will frame both the size of the ask and the timing of the ask. Because the size of the ask is also going to influence the timing of the ask.
Okay, thank you. One last question I had, and this is not related to the bond. The video school building that we sold and it generated a little over three million dollars, Terry.
Yes, sir.
And that was set aside for some CTE projects? Do we know what projects that it was set aside for?
I do not have that list. I know that we're working with the CTE program, um, to develop that. And I expect we should be pretty close to, to finalizing that list of projects.
Okay, when you do, share it with the board. So I'm sure we would want to know what the three million dollars is going for. Okay, thank you. Moving on, the next item on the, uh, agenda is the One Plan. And we had a symposium before summer break in, uh, uh, May, end of May. So I'll turn it over back again to Superintendent Gaul or Dr. Colicky.
Dr. Colicky and Natasha.
Okay.
I think you all have seen the primer of the, of the video. Well, I, I will just take a moment. That when you're paying attention to the major improvement strategies, I want you to be thinking and reflecting on the site-based organization that I intend to transition our central office towards, which is we know what schools need, and then the question is how do we deliver that to schools? And that is through what we have found through this symposium and then as directed by the area superintendents. We have those skills already on staff. We just want to dial in that right combination to meet those improvement strategies. We do, we do not want to hammer a square peg into a round hole and tell a school what central office thinks they need when we know that the One Plan is what they have asked us to get the resources from.
Thank you. And I just, I just wanted to throw out that as I worked with Dr. Gledich on the board priority document and then operationalizing it and how this gets reported out at work sessions, this was one of the reports that you, that you all requested. So this is the first time that we're, that we're talking about this symposium and the One Plan tied to best first instruction, uh, strategies. So we're always open to feedback. And if there's more information or other types of information that you would like on these, this is a repeating agenda item, so it will come back up in future work sessions. So please let us know, because we're trying to calibrate to what you guys, how to best serve your, your board priorities. But I just want to give, take a moment to just give a shout out to Natasha and her team and, and particularly at the time EDSLs, but now Area Supers and the, and the huge, huge working relationship um, that is, that has grown out of this work to support principals and their building team leads. You guys approved a pretty, a very significant budget item, uh, last year. Um, and into, again, this year, to pay for teacher time out of contract time to engage in a summer symposium, and that money is being well spent and well used um, in the sense that to have a team dedicated, um, after the year is done, the dust has started to settle and the opportunity to just look at data previous year and look at upcoming major improvement strategies. Um, I just want to thank you for your support of that, because it is absolutely foundational to the work of improvement in this district. Uh, so to have teachers being, be able to be involved in that and paid for their time is a big, big piece. So the intention here is to just tie together now all these different pieces that you, that have been put in front of you. The symposium with the One Plan with best first instruction. And how is that happening in the buildings and, and on the ground, out in the field? So I'll toss it over to, to Natasha, so she can take it from there.
All right. Well, um, the presentation is a virtual presentation that is available there through Board Docs. And I am happy to speak more to it, but I don't want to repeat what you maybe have already seen. So, um, that video will walk you through the two documents that I have hung there. One is an Excel spreadsheet, so that really is the report, um, to the board for that priority of having best first instruction specifically and explicitly called out throughout every school's One Plan. So, um, I invited Carol Gates to join me as well this evening um, because I am not your One Plan, or I am not your best first instruction expert, your One Plan expert. Um, so I wanted to make sure we had her voice and, and expertise in the room. Um, and to echo what Dr. Colicky just, um, said about, um, the funding for teachers, we had over seventy more teachers participate in this symposium last year than we did the year prior. Um, so that. Um, so that funding is allowing us to pay teachers and we made a commitment because it is imperative that a school plan not be designated by uh the school district or by the school administration, that it be a collaborative process between teachers, um ESP, which is Educational Support Professionals, um SAC, Community Members, so that would be your School Accountability Committee, that we have a group of people who are involved in that process. Because the goal of the ONE Plan is that it becomes a vehicle, a tool, to empower schools in their initiatives so that our our teachers are empowered to love teaching and our students are empowered to love learning. And that at the end of the day is what's going to grow our student achievement. So um, front and center, um, something that I did not mention in the video, because the ask was uh to call out the best first instruction alignment within those major improvement strategies. But you'll see on this first page of the Excel template, I included um theory of change statements for all of the major improvement strategies. And integral to that symposium work that we did this year was really scavenging through and thinking through the focus of trust and where perhaps that is not built up yet um in our schools. And so um, I forgot the survey that you had mentioned, the name of it that you know for trust, but we've used the five essentials. That really gives us a sense of where are we with student-teacher trust, um, teacher-teacher trust and teacher-principal trust. And you will see um that in those theory of change statement strategies that schools have selected with the specific intent of impacting trust within their buildings in addition to the best first instruction uh elements. So those were the heart and soul of this year's symposium, and it's just really exciting. Um, Superintendent Gaul, that you're coming in with that similar vision. Um, our visual is um, you can have um boats at staggered levels and with lakes, little lakes, little lake, little lake with a boat. If we raise the water, all of those boats rise and the boats are our student achievement and the water is our trust. So raising trust raises student achievement and it's all directly aligned. Um, so as Dr. Colicky said, please let me know um what you're hoping for um me to provide you during these reports, as well as any questions you may have. I'll take notes and I will adjust accordingly.
Natasha, the main theme that we saw in the report for best first instruction, what's the main vein for this year?
Yep.
Can you, can you share just, because there's people listening.
Absolutely. So actually, I am going to kick the best first instruction detail question uh over to Carol Gates, because
Carol.
that is definitely her zone of expertise.
For sure. So the two thirds of our choices were the planning for learning pathway, and when I say that, we have um put the learning into three pathways that folks could choose. So I have kind of a, you know, basic diagram of that, if y'all wanna take a look at that. And so it's either planning for learning, engagement, or quality questioning, big concrete strategies. And so what we noticed is that most of our schools, two thirds of them are doing the planning for learning um pathway along, so that would be the orange pathway when you get your diagram. And what we have now is all of the, we have a one-page summary of every single school's choice. And what they have is their, is a strategy, and now we have to get to the concrete actions, which is really those step-by-step matrix or, you know, metrics. I have a version of Madison Elementary, if you wanna see what that looks like, is a broken down piece to the second category. Um, I just wasn't sure how much detail y'all wanted.
I will.
Okay.
We're just messing around and people can take.
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
And this just gives you an example, and basically when you're looking at Madison's and you look at the the major strategy of planning for learning, they did planning for learning for now, and that's where you'll see the objective. And then under the objective, they have um focus standards and uh common formative assessments as their major lever. And then the metrics and milestones for first semester and second semester so far that they did with their instructional leadership team with some of our support with Brian and Natasha and everyone. So that kinda gives you an idea. Inside the ONE Plan, of course, it's a larger improvement document. But for the MIS one, we just really wanted to give them a direct, literal map, like step to step to step, knowing that this is the year we're going to help them get there. We wanted them to have some pre-built milestones that we should be held accountable for helping them get to.
Aren't the common formative assessments uh built by the individual teacher or is that grade level or?
Both. We have um, of course, if you're talking about Eureka Mathematics, you you know, squared that we're bringing in, they have common formative assessments all the time. Science has common formative assessments all the time, so through the program we'll see some. We'll see some teacher-created, and then we'll see some that we put together with them if they would like benchmarking quarterly through our performance matter system.
Let those BFI's will drip into designing challenging tasks with the depth of knowledge question.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, you're going to see a lot of overlap, because these are all high-leverage strategies, but we wanted them to have a hyper-focus. So we're gonna help you understand the system through this focus. So if engagement is your mantra, we're gonna help you get there through engagement, so that they can really be very focused on that targeted piece, but a lot of it's gonna overlap for sure.
Was there a requirement for every school to have a BFI? It looks like some don't.
There was.
Okay.
They should all accept for our charter schools, I do not yet have uh major improvement strategies for our charter schools, and it was an option for them to select to participate in the ONE Plan Symposium, and um we did not yet have a charter school go through the ONE Plan process.
Okay. I might have misspoke, I thought I saw one that was not, didn't have a BFI.
Um, if you go to the second tab of the document, um it's listed perhaps more clearly so you can, you know, see at a glance without the detail.
So when we're doing site visits or when area supes are doing site visits, they can come in and look at this list, and when they're going to Saban, they know they're gonna be looking at how that school is improving engagement with their, with their ONE Plan, at the goal.
That's exactly right. So thank you for that articulation.
So we're.
Yep.
The role of the area superintendent is to operationalize the ONE Plan, so we don't wait until next year's ONE Plan Symposium to see whether or not the school has met their goals. So.
Okay, follow up to that. If if their mantra, as Miss Gates mentioned, is engagement, have we then offered or are we offering then professional development around engagement or around planning for learning for these schools to be able to take advantage of if it's in their ONE Plan?
So again, this is like we've built these segues. Uh, I introduce you to my new chief academic officer, who will be taking on those responsibilities to make sure that those are built with the fidelity to ensure that they do deliver on the needs of the individual teacher and the school specifically to that ONE Plan. So we are, we are moving very quickly to deliver on those. Uh, it is extremely exciting to see the work that's happened in best first instruction over this last year, particularly since it was a transition year, coming from COVID back to operating full face-to-face. And so we're super excited to see the buy-in that has happened at the principal level as you, we can count them out, you know, every, every traditional school listed in there with a major improvement strategy. And now it's on us at Central Office to ensure that we're delivering the resources and allocating them against those needs.
Thank you.
I just wanna piggyback if I can.
You have a question? Go ahead.
Um, the second document that I've hung in Board Docs just takes an excerpt from some of the materials that curriculum and instruction has pulled together around um the flow of implementation for best first instruction in our district. Um, the analogy that I would use is last year, we um, so if we were farmers, last year we got our boxes of seeds and we unpacked the seeds and we know what kinds of vegetables we're going to grow, but we didn't really go beyond that. This year, we're learning how, how do we plant the seeds, how much water goes into this seed? So it's really a transition year, a learning year um for our schools and for our teachers. Um, and so some of the metrics that we've built in are going to be really focused around the growth of teacher capacity, because you have to grow and learn as that farmer, if you will, um before you can harvest what grows out of that. So I also, um, I'll kick it over to Carol again to piggyback on that. Um, but they, there definitely is a, an intentionality and a flow from year to year around what, where we intend to be and expect to be at each point.
You'll, you'll see on there, there's some focus metrics. We're using the coherence rubric from Michael Boland's work, who did all of the transformation stuff in the Canadian system. But within there, um, we know that in order to get good at anything, we have to have a very high, hyper-focus. And so our metrics for this work are going to be around how coherent is the system getting over time? And so we have a rubric, we are going to have every time we meet with anybody, they're gonna give us feedback and exit ticket information for our data. We're going to be collecting that to see if we're moving along the rubric to show growth in having that small number of goals tied to student learning and change knowledge um being used. So that's really just the learner rubric. So if you think about it, it's the benchmarking and the common formatives that we'll be collecting. How are we doing as the teachers or the students and the site leaders as the learners? And that's, that's what I'm hoping we can do is get to a much more coherent, measurable system, and we have some metrics that we can bring whenever you all ask.
With that focus, I remember as a teacher that, hey, this is what we're doing this year. And oh, by the way, keep doing all these other things that you've been doing. So with this hyper-focus, which I appreciate, if this is the goal and the, and the ONE Plan is decided on for each, each of these schools, is there a additional focus by area supes principals to say, if this what we're gonna work on, if this is how we're gonna expand the, the context of these farmers, uh, which are teachers who are doing the real work, how do we then lessen the load or, or, you know, what can we take off of their plate so that they're not, you know, mowing their front yard of the farmhouse while they're supposed to be out planting the seed in the field, kinda deal? And so I just wanna make sure that that would be a clear directive that we're trying to take care of our teachers by saying, hey, remember everything you did last year? Well, now we're doing this and you gotta keep it all going. How can we give them the autonomy, say, we are focusing on just this? And and I'm not saying, I'm not asking for an answer, I'm just saying I would like that to be expressed, that we are, are giving teachers the ability to say, here's what we decided on as a school, we're, we have all buy-in, this is what we're focused on, this is one of the things where you could over-communicate this, every, every staff meeting, every, whatever the schools are doing, and here's how we're taking things off your plate to help you achieve this mission. Just rhetorical question.
One hundred percent my goal, um, because I too was in the classroom where you're just like, oh my gosh,
And the teachers will do it, the teachers will check the box and get it done.
how can we do seven thousand things?
Yeah.
Um, but if I'm going to do something really, really deeply well, it needs to be a narrowed focus. And so um, I am really excited about where we are this year with our ONE Plans with the intentional focus that the schools have called out. If you had asked for this report beginning of last year, because last year was our first year of ONE Plan work, I would have uh been really, it was definitely a year of learning for me, for our schools. Um, and I think that we really have anchored into what are our strategies? And we have um collaborated with our area superintendents to develop a structure for um us to come into schools as a support network um alongside our area superintendents. And so that is built in and will occur at least three times per year with every school site. So um, I did not bring that presentation, we could do that.
Yeah, the, the visual that maybe you can know is that we met with Madison, the example that you have three times now. Brian, as the person at the time, the EDSL for Madison, brought Natasha, myself, and Ed Effectiveness folks in the room. We listened to the story first, we met another time, it's a, it's a very hyper-protocol piece in which we would coach the principal, and Brian's great at doing this, and I'm sure all of them are, where it says, what is getting in the way of you being able to focus? And that's what we're gonna do is just, we know that everybody's gonna have to have a stop-doing list, but the principal's gonna have to be coached on saying, what is it that we can clear the road for? And if they don't have that control, they need to pass it up to say, you guys need to help us here, and then we will do our best to do that.
That'll be all that.
So you, you may answer my question. You have, you're gonna have probably anywhere from five to ten percent early adopters. That majority, the people are gonna finally cave in after a while. You're gonna have your later, later doctors, and those are the ones that are causing the problems. Probably ten percent of your, of your teachers are just gonna hate you forever. You have to have a strategy for them to not kill them, but you know, you gotta get them into the, into the boat. Or, you know, you know, the worst case scenario, they're just not gonna make it. And you're gonna have a lot of those that just, I don't wanna do this. You'll have, if you figure ten percent of how many teachers we have, that's a whole rip. So I don't know if you have a strategy for those.
And Director Lem, I think that too is why it is so critical that this be a plan that is developed by the, the teachers and the community and the heart of the school, so that um there is that collective buy-in and we're in it together. And I agree that has to grow over time and become very much the, the focus of how this work grows.
So we use a change management lens over any of the strategies that we push. This is a evolving strategy over time. It was very exciting for me during the interview to see how much work District Eleven has done on really operationalizing a ONE Plan, which is why I put it in the center of my site-based solution. Is it's the school, the ONE Plan, the principal that represents the entirety of that voice of the school. And so with all change, there is uh difficulty. Uh, everybody wants a new parking space until it's, the change is theirs.
Yeah.
Um, and we, we acknowledge that, we will work through it, but to Natasha's point,
Absolutely.
we are much further along than perhaps we thought we would have been last year, and I think it was particularly by the investment of having teachers bought in and participate into the ONE Plan Symposium. Yes, those were probably many early adopters or people on the fence. Um, but you know, in order for us to get to the vision and the mission of the district, we have to be able to get the majority of our people there. And so that's, that's on uh myself and the staff and the team that we have to be able to get there.
Yep.
One, one, one exciting piece of learning that we went through this past year is you're exactly right, there's, there will be, there'll be residence, reticence and hesitancy to jump in at some, at some levels by some people. But there's an underlying, there are underlying questions there as to why as well. And with the five essentials, looking at climate and culture being the core, the core construct of that survey, that's given us an opportunity to explore what is the hesitancy at a certain site? And why, why are some teachers slow, slow to jump in? And that gives an opportunity to come in and support as well. We learned some interesting things at different sites around just some kind of, kinda historical baggage, if you will, for lack of a better term.
Yeah.
That we can really start to give the principal as the primary change agent in that school the tools to start to bring those teachers together, and teacher-teacher trust can start to grow, teacher-leader trust can start to grow. So I think you're exactly right in looking even two or three levels deeper than we have someone who is resistant. Why are they resistant and what's the story underneath that?
Yeah.
And bringing in systems and structures that really allow, um, like you said, that why to really truly listen. So um, as I mentioned, there's been this evolving um growth in the ONE Plan work over the past year. Some of that came directly from us listening out into our schools. And if we heard something that wasn't working for a school, we said, come to the table, we're having a meeting on Tuesday, and we wanna know, we always wanna know what is not working, um, because oftentimes, um we, it's something that we didn't think through perhaps, or um, or what have you. So really listening to that why, um, not just, we're not going to discredit the why. There's value in, in that message, so.
Just to kinda cap that off, the, the, the protocol that Brian and Natasha were using when we were in the room with Madison's leadership team really got into things like the staff, you know, where are they in their mindset? Are they feeling like a learner? Are they willing to grow? Where are you having difficulty? And, and they're very good at saying, here's where I might have some troubles, we're giving them some strategies to help move that around and, and, and kind of wrap our arms around where that might happen. But you're right, we need, we are at past early adopter phase, all of the things we have for best first instruction were early designed teams of teachers. And so we have those early adopters that were the front loading of this.
Yeah.
Now we have to bring everyone together, and that's why we're calling this a transition learning year, because we know we're having to fold it into everyone now.
Hmm, cool. Black dot, you had a question or comment? Okay.
You can go first.
Start and answer, no problem.
Oh, okay. Uh, I have some questions about the spreadsheet. I didn't read all one hundred and twenty of the ONE Plans or more. But just, I'm noticing some are more, I guess, vague and some are very specific. So is what we're seeing here kind of a top level, here's what, the what and the. So is what we're seeing here kind of a top level, here's what the what and then? Is there a plan? I like plans, you know, I mentioned it earlier, that they of how they're going to actually implement. And for example, um, I'll let you answer that first, then I'll come back.
Yes, absolutely. So, um, what you're seeing here is a high level at a glance of a fifty page. Um, intensive plan and the one plan is used then to populate the one or to populate the U I Ps. Um, so that schools aren't having to duplicate their efforts, um, it's all together, one piece. Um, so like when you guys have reviewed or, no, it wasn't your group, sorry. I forgot the shift over, but, um, in early September, you will, um, have at least four schools presenting their U I Ps to the board. Um, and you'll see a comprehensive, um, what picture of what that looks like. And I'm happy to share with you the entirety of what that plan works and what it looks like. So it it starts at identifying the problem or the challenge that is evident in your data. So the teams went through a five to eight hour data analysis process. Where they're they're looking at data from student outcome data to perception data to demographic data, the whole. The whole thing. And then, um, they identify their priority challenge that they're going to address. And from there, what research based strategy are we going to implement to impact change on that? How are we going to then, um, bring about implementation change with our staff? Because it was just a small group, so what what does this mean for our school identity? What does this mean for communicating out to our parents and communicating out to the rest of the school? And us all coming together and owning this piece. Um, and then the last piece, which will be built into, um, what we're doing with the area superintendents throughout the year. Includes, um, looking at their implementation benchmarks and their action steps. And coaching them forward to where there may be elements that are more vague. Um, sometimes we don't know what we don't know, um, and so that will come through some, uh, I kind of like that lock, like the lock does not match every school. And we'll be personalizing and growing, um, through those coaching.
So I'm just gonna ask Sherry if you can opine quickly, having stood in both positions over the last year.
Sure.
To answer directly that we do have differentiated levels of response and how we handle that.
Yes, we do. Um, we do see some schools that, um, are very good at writing an if then a, um, theory of action statement. Others will need more support and like Natasha said, that is absolutely the role of the area superintendent. And the resources that we're able to push into that school. We review the, um, one plans for every one of our schools. Um, one plans are not, you know, when we used to write USIPS, you wrote it and for most schools, that was it.
Yeah.
Um, you might go back and review it, but you certainly did not change it. One plans are dynamic documents that do get updated throughout the year, that do get looked at, monitored, evaluated throughout the year. For some schools, that will be minimal because they're very skilled at at writing these plans. Um, for others, those changes, those adaptations will be, um, far more in depth. And it is that personalization piece of looking at what does the school need? Is this a veteran principal who knows how to plan very, very well? Knows how to, uh, create actions that align to those goals and then knows how to monitor those actions? Or is this maybe a brand new principal and a a pretty new staff who may need greater levels of support? Um, we've seen that, you know, as I I think about the time in the C A O role, we've seen that vary by level. Uh, elementary, middle, high, we've seen it vary by, um, length of time for the principal. We've seen it vary in a number of different ways. Um, but that's where our responsiveness comes into play as area superintendents.
Absolutely, and that's where our listening in also matters. Because, um, sometimes I'll say, okay, so this is what I'm reading in your one plan. Tell me more, what what does that mean? And as they're talking, the the thinking flow, so it just depends on on each, um, school team. And what works best, if they aren't written, um, in the way that communicates to me. I'm going to ask a clarifying question to delve deeper and to get some clarity around it. So that, um, oftentimes the the intent and the thought and the ideas are there. At even if I didn't yet see it explicitly in the plan. So it's always, it's always a back and forth and, uh, working in service of the school.
Mm-hmm.
Um, because it's their plan, they're building and growing their capacity.
That's good, I mean.
You had a follow up question.
Yeah, it seems like there's this common phrase about clearly defined expectations communicated clearly, sorry, I'm finding it. Clearly defined and communicated expectations for quantity and quality.
Yes.
I don't understand what that means. And so if I was a teacher, not a part of the symposium at my school.
Sure.
Would I be able to, I mean, is there more information that they're getting that then is, here are the expectations? From who, you know, is it the principal to this, um, teachers, is it the teachers to the students? And that's where I noticed there's the variability and some of them were really specific and gave me it and said to families or, you know. And so I was like, oh, okay, that make, it was tangible, I could understand where they were going.
Right.
And it was a specific, uh, we're gonna have family nights, here's the expectation.
Right.
So I just, I guess, wanted to make sure that.
Yep, you are right, it is definitely a bird's eye view. And those words that you called out, those were my words. Um, because sometimes we say, oh, we're going to do something and check, and this is a checklist.
Mm-hmm.
This is, um, deeper change management, um, work that's happening. And so, um, along with the area superintendents, how do you know that you're making the progress?
Yes.
And and moving forward in the way that you intended? And so that phrase kind of encapsulates that and, um, was just a plug and play.
Okay.
It was part of a plug and play sentence, um, so.
Good to know, I figured there was more to it, but.
Uh, probably needs to be reworded.
Oh, good, no, I mean, it's it's good, we want defined expectations, but, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. This is kinda. Yeah. It gives us an overview of what's happening at every school.
Absolutely.
But we can dig deeper into the school performance, the school improvement plan for each school if it is necessary.
Absolutely.
But this is a document that we as a school board haven't had in the past. What are the major improvement strategies for each specific school? Now, this document really identifies. And as board members, and like what we, Director Jorgensen talked about, uh, area superintendents and even board members. And this board has shown an interest in visiting schools. When we visit schools and board members visit schools, they can talk to the principals and ask those questions.
Absolutely.
And now I have a document that I have, if I'm visiting Adams Elementary, I know what their, uh, three major improvement strategies are. And I can specifically hone in on that and ask the specific questions with the principals and see how that practice is made. It's a living, breathing document like what, uh, Ms. Kalback was talking about. And this is not like set in stone, so it dehoofs us, all of us to follow up on it.
Correct.
And I encourage the board to ask those questions when you visit the schools.
So I think Director Ott had a great comment in a conversation that we had earlier this week. On visiting a school is very important, visiting a school for a specific reason is even more important and more impactful. And Director Ott shared with me that had on visiting a school, visiting a P L C. Had people remember that she was at the school, even though she'd been at the school many times before that. And so if you know that the school's major improvement strategy is around planning. And then you ask the principal, hey, I'm gonna be a buy on Tuesday, is there a chance that I can visit a P L C? And see how you're progressing on your one plan and you're planning as a major improvement strategy.
Yep.
Then everybody is aligned on the same vision of how we're gonna turn the school around. Not just showing up and checking a box.
And they get nervous.
Yes. Absolutely. That's exactly.
Thank you, Director Ott, for sharing that.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm, go ahead.
You mentioned that you've already gotten some feedback, that was one of the questions I had. Is there a process now in place for the people who participated to give feedback on, uh, what worked well, what didn't, did they find it viable, that kind of thing?
Can you, can you grab that and talk about the cycle, would we do, um, on the, uh, would we do it three times a year? Plan, maybe if you grabbed it.
And, um, and also, um, just directly after the symposium, school teams went through and, um, I collected qualitative feedback.
Mm-hmm.
So immediate feedback, but then we're always listening in throughout the year as well. And I'll keep that over to you.
Thank you, good evening, welcome back. So just to kind of try to pull together the bits and pieces you're hearing. What we're attempting to do this year and we have great hopes is one plan quarterly reviews. They'll be scheduled first, second and third quarter. All the area superintendents will go out. We'll use the one plan as our tool, as Carol, Natasha and Dr. Colakia referenced. And we'll have the school lead the meeting and talk about what's their major improvement strategy? How are they measuring and monitoring its implementation? Then that third column would be what is the income or what is the outcomes for adults? And what is the outcomes for students that we're monitoring, measuring and supporting? And at the end of each M I S, we will then say, what's in your way, Principal Kalback? What can we do to support that? And thankfully, as you've also heard, we'll have someone from Educator Effectiveness. See and I in that room, in that principal's office with that school's leadership team. And we can say, Mr. Gall, how are you gonna support Principal Bankus and their team with that information and that request or that barrier? The second part, the second meeting, we'll follow up on that information and we'll start looking at more specific data. What data do you have that the walkthroughs are measuring that M I S in place and in action? And how are we measuring and monitoring the student outcome data? Then to answer your question, at the end of each meeting, we will make sure that we ask for feedback at the end of each protocol. Schools what worked today and what didn't, and how can we get better next time we come out?
Will it be anonymous?
It can be if you'd like it to be.
I mean, I just think, uh, if a teacher's there with our principal, they might not feel comfortable with being, I mean, even your previous feedback that you received, was it?
Yeah. 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 Yeah.
Did people, were people able to speak freely?
Yeah. Um, I, that's that's a great suggestion, I hear that over there and we'll be more than willing to do that. With Keller and Madison, they've been pretty open, um, they've caught us off guard with what they've said. But we felt like it was what we needed to hear to get better, to support them, so we appreciate it and thank them.
Yes, good shout, good shout out, Keller and Madison let us do a couple of trial runs with this.
Great suggestion. Mm-hmm.
Um, last spring and this summer and we're so appreciative of their feedback and guidance.
Something I'm really excited about is that I'm I'm guessing when we looked at the original M I S ones. Some of the folks that did our Hewlett Grant work for innovation, did a strategic purposing, visioning, missioning deep dive and how to do that as a staff. And I was noticing that theirs are a little tighter and a little bit clearer, like you're seeing some differences. So that tells us, oh, so when, like the theory of action, when we explicitly teach them how to do these types of goal setting pieces. And then kind of what your milestones look like, they start to tighten up. So we get to do more and more of that with all the groups. So my hope is that some of the data we'll see at the at the end of this year is that they'll see they started this way. And look how much better they got over time. Because that tells us that we're actually making an impact.
I know you guys have been working on this for quite a while and it's exciting, I I'm excited to hear about all of this, so thank you, thank you for your hard work.
And you know, Director Nelson, one last thought is, are you familiar with plan, do you study act models?
No.
Okay, might be something just to think about, about the plan is the M I S, the do is how they're gonna implement it. They're gonna study it and they're gonna act quarter by quarter with data, evidence and all that information. But it's something we used to use in D eleven as I look around the room years ago, uh, from Malcolm Baldrick. Thank you for the suggestion too.
I know we have a lot to cover, so.
Okay, good, um. No further questions on this topic.
What's that?
The participation in the symposium itself by all schools, that was good participation you have in the two or three days.
Excellent. Yeah.
And as far as the state test results go, do we have an update on where we are at with that, see master?
We're still waiting on growth scores, so we have the raw scale scores, but that's a
Yeah.
It's a somewhat helpful but limited value without growth being that that's up to sixty percent.
And now schools with that now at a certain point in time and they have the results, they can go and refine their.
Correct, we just sent out access to principals to their, to their scale score results, um, disaggregated by subgroup. And we're just wait, it should be any day that we get growth and then we will.
Okay.
We'll come back in a moment, that's worked, uh, as we get the information, work session, share that with Ford.
And are we working on the district improvement plan?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's that's being done in tandem with the school improvement plans.
Anything else that you need to share?
Yeah, if I may, um, I shared out the the running enrollment totals. And so I know a couple of questions came up, for the sake of time for this meeting, we'll probably just go ahead and just reply reply all to those questions about. Uh, where do we meet, where do we meet previous years, we're working out that model now. And then there was another question about how charter, district charter schools fit into that, fit into those numbers.
When you categorize charter, was it D eleven charter or an out of?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was D it was D eleven charter on that list. But I did wanna take the moment, take a moment to introduce our new director of enrollment, Melissa Andrews, who comes to us from D forty nine. Uh, amazing expertise in, uh, projections and really looking at student movement across the district. In D forty nine, it's a different context, right? It's like on the other end of the spectrum, but her expertise is gonna be huge for us. And we are cranking through summer, summer enrollment. So take a look at that and then we'll we'll go ahead and answer those questions, but I just wanted to put a face, put a face to the name that you guys hear from and she'll be reporting that.
And she we already got introduced and we found out how resourceful she was and sitting outside the school building and through COVID in enrolling students, so, uh, thank you for what you're doing.
Yeah. Yeah.
Have you had much, um, I guess, traffic with the new office and the enrollment, uh, people that we approved?
Yeah, yeah, so it's exciting to see what, most of our enrollments are coming through on online through Power School, which is working, which is working well. Um, most of the foot traffic into the building, and Melissa, please jump in. Um, are coming from our non-English speaking families and we have two two interpreters on hand that can help, uh, support that. And then other people who just find the online process is challenging in one form or another are able to come in and get get the help that they need. Um, so it is, it is working really well, those the kids areas getting great use, yeah. The three registrars are are cranking. So when we had COVID hit our office, it was a kind of an all hands on deck process. And, uh, so we were able to go ahead and submit, continue to submit and get enrollments moving. And some of those registers even worked from home once they were feeling better, so. To the, to the call out of your team and your culture that you're setting for them is is really great.
Are you noticing any movement from, uh, with parents with children in charter schools and bringing them back to their neighborhood school?
No, I need to go look specifically at that category of students. There has been a lot of a district transition, I'm not so sure that that's one of them.
And and my question has stemmed from the high price of gas. And the, uh, impact it has on some of our families.
Right, I'd definitely be willing to look at that.
Okay.
So let's go to the back to the school report that Superintendent Gall wants to talk about and maybe we can tie in some of these questions.
Yeah. Yeah.
Regarding even enrollment to the back to the school.
So, uh, as, uh, I'll I'll ask Terry to come up and brief on facilities first, but just to tie out enrollment. We are seeing some positive trends, um, with choice applications. We've communicated to school leaders that everyone is open, if they have physical capacity, we will take applications. And we have seen demand signal requiring us to post F T E requirements. Because we are seeing strong demand for strong performing schools, which shouldn't be, you know, a a new idea to anyone. We're also seeing demand on, uh, expanding our pre K opportunities. I've spoken with some of you on, we wanna put our best foot forward as early as possible. And we wanna zero out our waitlist, we had a waitlist of, you know, up to a couple of hundred families over last year. And so we've done a couple of site visits and I believe Chapita has already put in for licensure for an additional classroom. Of which they already have a F T E that we hope that we found, uh, somebody with yesterday in one of our job fairs that you'll get an update on as well as we're doing that. But the idea is, is that in a in a district that is in suffering from decreasing enrollment, let's go after where we know there is demand. There is demand at the pre K level, so let's go get them. Uh, anytime we can get kids earlier means that we can get them socially, emotionally prepared for kindergarten, to be higher performing on their kindergarten readiness. We have a greater chance of actually keeping them enrolled in the system if we get to shop them for the entirety of the year. And we get a higher utilization of the building space that we have. Um, and so we're super excited about that. And again, the idea of an underutilized building, if you have room, let's bring families in, we'll get to the F T Es. And Phoebe and her team have demonstrated the ability to do that and you'll get some of that update here, uh, on the back to school report, Terry.
Thank you, sir. Um, welcome back, it's been a productive and long summer for us. Uh, if we could go to the next slide, what I've got is just some slides to go through my departments and the great things that, um, we've been doing. So start off with the capital program, you know, the this is the end of our ten week construction season. We tried for eight, but because of supply chain issues, we were coming down to the wire on quite a few projects. So you're going to still see things out there that normally you wouldn't see. But in the last twelve months, we've completed about thirty-one projects totaling twenty point seven million dollars. You know, that started last August when we finished the RJ Whack repiping project to provide quality drinking water throughout the school. What's not included in that number are the projects that we have in, in progress. You know, one of the largest that we have, most visible, is the HVAC project at Mitchell. So that is not included in those numbers. I've got three examples of projects that we're doing across the district that I wanted to highlight. And the reason I want to highlight those is to show you the mythology that I've been able to start instilling in, in my folks after three years in the job. The bottom left corner is, we just completed this summer, a multi-year classroom hardware project. Where now every classroom door can be locked from the inside. But we didn't stop just there. We also went out and tackled the accessibility issue with the door handles. If you notice, the door handle on the left is a lever, not a knob. So now, not only can they lock, but every classroom is accessible. That is huge. The Martinez photo in the middle. So from the outside, it's, you can, well, you can lock it from the inside, so nobody can open it from the outside. But accessibility wise, people with some disabilities can use a lever that cannot use a knob.
Oh, I see.
So we are trying to, as best we can, we're tackling multiple requirements with, with the same project. So the Martinez landscaping project there, if you look on the picture of the left in the middle, it shows what Superintendent Gall called Colorado landscaping. You know, a slope that had dead grass and weeds on it. You know, that is a time intensive nightmare for our, our building staff. So what we've done, what we're systematically trying to do when we go in there and fix those things, is to make it sustainable, zero scape landscaping. It still requires some maintenance, but it's at a much lower level. It's a much better position going forward. From my previous life in the Air Force, pavements were one of my responsibilities for Air Force Base Command. The, at McCullough, that school is fifteen years old. In fifteen years, we have not touched that pavement. Okay? So the life of a pavement in this altitude is the UV rays bake off the, the organ, the, the tar compounds. You get loose aggregate, loose aggregate gets dislodged, cracks form, water infiltration, and it slowly just degrades. If we go in periodically and do what I'm going to refer to as sustainment projects, we can spend ten to fifteen cents on the dollar, do that three or four times in a twenty or thirty year lifespan. And we can have what people will think is a brand new pavement. So if you go to McCullough, it will look like we milled and overlaid and put in a brand new pavement system. We didn't. We did a sustainment project that will extend the life of that pavement for another seven years. Maybe ten, okay? Now, we talked a little bit about the refreshing the FMP. My next challenge is to take these sustainment plans by system and implement them into the facility master plan. So we have that methodology there. So we can save going forward. We don't want to spend all of our money to correct things that have failed. Because if we do that, more things will fail before we get there, and we'll never climb out of the hole. So that is a very, very crucial point that I wanted to make to you all tonight. Moving forward to the next slide, I've just got some more examples of some of the great things that we're doing within the capital program. The, the schools right now that, that have decided that most of them want new marquees. Unfortunately, that's not a high infrastructure need for us. But we're working with them to modernize our marquees. So two that we did this, this year were Coronado and Palmer. Much better solution to what we had. On the bleachers at Swigert and North, you know, those, those, we had old wood bleachers in those facilities that probably dated back to the time when most of us would have been in those schools. Okay? Those bleachers were falling apart, and they were not safe. So when we go in and fix things like that, we're providing a more sustainable material. And then we're trying to help aesthetics a little bit to give them pride in their school. Systematically, we have tried to bite off a few projects every year. It's not more than a handful this year. It was essentially Coronado because it's a bigger facility. Trying to replace some of the old flooring systems that we had that required extensive amount of maintenance. You know, we still have tiles in our school that you have to go through and strip and wax every year. If you've ever seen that process, that is just horrendous in the amount of manpower that it takes. So we are trying to replace flooring systems with luxury vinyl tile. Because it's, it's LVT, LVP. It's a vinyl planking system. And essentially, all you have to do is mop it. You don't have to wax it. And so we've done that in Coronado in the, in the school. We've got Rudy, a gym floor that we're doing. You know, it just makes them look so much better, so much more inviting. Unfortunately, we don't have a lot of money to spend on this, so we're trying to hit impactful, spread it around a little bit. And over time, we're making progress. It's just slow, painful progress. And then when we find things like at Saban, where we have infrastructure needs on the outside, where the drainage isn't very well, moving away from the building, not only are we going there and fixing the drainage, but we're trying to make it look a little bit better, a little bit more functional. Next slide, please, Maricela. Some of the big things that we're doing, HVAC is always going to be on, on the list. You'll see at Bristol, we raised semi tractor trailer size rooftop units on top of that facility to, to give them a new system. We just didn't stop there. The yellow piping project underneath, now, we, we did corrosion control on that. That's, the yellow is essentially new paint, but we don't have to worry about corrosion on the pipes. We're continuing to go across the schools, like at Doherty, when we have selective failures, and fix those specific units that have failed when we can, so that the entire system is, is, is working. What you won't see when you go to the schools unless you have one of my grand master keys is things like at Mann, where we go into the mechanical room and re-pipe it. Because when we have failures at, at schools like Mann that are fifty, sixty, seventy years old, it's important to minimize the amount of outage across the school. So that's why we have to do projects like that. Next slide, please. One of the exciting things we've got going right now is at Gary Berry Stadium. In about two hours and change, we will be operationally testing brand new lighting system at Gary Berry. The community is going to love it because the light is going to be on the field. It's not going to be on their house. Okay? So, you know, the reason it's got to be tested tonight is we need it dark. But Julie, you'll appreciate this. You know, it's about a seven year payback for the project, and it drops the operating cost for those lights to about a third. Okay? So those are just some continuing things we go, we're doing. The Erps Gym, originally, I thought it was an energy savings project to replace our old boiler system for the hot, domestic hot water in the building. What we did instead is we are working to replace the last steam heating system we have in the district with less dangerous, less time intensive solutions. So the, one of the precursor steps to replacing a steam boiler in, whenever we can get that level of funding, started with putting in two domestic hot water boilers, and that's what those two units are, to feed a water tank. This project in itself isn't going to pay for itself. Those are ninety-six percent efficient burners. But what it's going to do is it's going to allow us to replace a system that I have to have a technician, a minimum of two days a week, go service a boiler. To put this in perspective, to the rest of the boilers that we have in the district, we service them once a quarter, unless they have a problem. So we're trying to work smarter and not harder. Let's transition to the next slide, which I think is my facilities department. So in facilities, unlike the traditional thought of a school district where we get the summer off, facilities never stops. Yes, my people were able to take a little bit of time off with their families. But they still completed over nine hundred work orders this summer. That is from the end of school to last week, over nine hundred. They are really the unsung heroes in the district because they do not stop. But it didn't stop there. The building staffs have stepped up tremendously. And I cannot emphasize how well our building managers and our building technicians did. They used up a third of my budget, my annual budget in the month of July. I'm going to have to figure out where we're going to go for snow removal because that was a big chunk of where that money was, was allocated for, for them to come in to open up the schools early. Not only are they taking care of their own schools, these superstars are stepping out above and beyond. The Palmer crew has been to Galileo and Jenkins and refreshed those gym floors. Those schools had depleted staffs. They couldn't have done it this year without them. Palmer and Steele assisted Coronado to put the school back together after we tore it up to replace flooring. We've had Chapeeta's staff go to Jackson, who were missing a building manager, to train a new building tech on how to use a floor scrubber. Now, that building tech is an Afghani refugee. He doesn't speak English. That may be the first time he's seen a piece of equipment of that size and magnitude and complexity. And so, you know, I just cannot over emphasize how important it was for somebody to go in there and show him some grace and help him out. And then finally, we've got people across the district stepping up outside of their job, helping out. The picture up on the screen is an AP mowing grasses school. Okay? We've also had building managers and building techs volunteer their time on the weekends at their kids' school. We've had teachers and other staff doing the same thing. It's just phenomenal that when, when the going gets tough, the people are stepping up. Now, I'd be remiss if I didn't go to the next slide and show you what we're going to be able to do with the, with the budget authority that you gave us for a custodial contract. As of the first of the month, we were at a hundred and forty-three out of two hundred and eight authorized building management and building technician, staffing across the district. That is actually up two and a half FTE from last month. The, the chart on the bottom is an ever, ever evolving staffing plan on how we're going to use that new custodial contract that you funded for us. And I think you're going to see it next week at the, the board for formal approval. We had a little bit of a hitch. Our initial intent was to have that contract in place so that the contractor would have staffing in place to help us to get ready to school, for school. Unfortunately, the highest ranked offer backed out. So we had to go to number two, which has been a mixed blessing because we, we told you we thought we could get fifteen FTE. We're now at twenty-five. So.
So we can get twenty-five FTEs for that?
So what, what I have up, up there on the chart is two columns. So every school is listed. The column on the left shows where they're at today without the staff augmentation. The color coding is sixty-seven percent or less is red. Sixty-eight to seventy-nine percent is yellow, and above eighty percent is green. So you see in that first column, we have quite a bit of red throughout. When we apply the, the staffing, the contractor's staffing, you can see how it's changing the colors on, on the columns. And when you add the fact that we, I think we have a pending hire on an elementary school staff, we will be green across the elementary schools. And that is one of our primary focus areas because those staffs are extremely small. Oftentimes, there's one, building manager plus one, maybe one and a half. So we had to take care of them. Then we took, after we took care of them, we went and said, okay, what can we do at the middle and high schools? It's not quite the same success story, but we know where building managers are willing to step up and their staffs to work overtime. Because if you remember, last year, we had a huge bill. We're still going to have to do some of the same, but this should minimize that overtime requirement to keep our schools in better condition.
So when will that custodial contract people enter our buildings?
Late latter part of August, Chris? Is that?
Middle of August.
Middle of August, so around the start of school.
And are they in the evenings after school? Or are they screened and able to be around like students?
They are being screened, but I think most of them are evening.
They'll be background checked, and they'll be able to be in schools.
And they, they will be assigned to specific schools, and that's where they will be for the rest of the year?
That's where they will start for the year. With, with this contract, we have the ability to move them. If we have greater needs somewhere else, or we're able to hire somebody, we can move them. We, it's a cooperative agreement that was within the contract on how we do that. So it's not instant movement. It may take a couple of weeks' notice because we don't want to disrupt their employees and their lives by telling them, no, we need you to go opposite end of town. So we'll work with the contractor on how we move those, those staffing positions.
And the main reason we can't hire our own staff, we don't pay enough?
That has historically been a, a challenge. I know that we did increase their, their, their pay. I don't remember exactly what it, it ended up being. I know it's, it's still not as high as we would like, but it is better than it, it's been.
And so, you know, we have staffing challenges, which Phoebe will cover here in a second. Directaloma and several ESP categories. And it is consistent with the changing economy and workforce. The idea of working for a school district at a potentially slightly less than hourly wage, but for a longer period of time, is not necessarily landing with the next generation of the workforce. Many of us with our own children are often advising them, you should stay a couple of years. They are lucky to stay a, a year or two. And they're not seeing negative effects in their own career progressions. And so this idea of public service and/or security and loyalty and long-term employment is, is a model that is being challenged by the very people that we seek to employ.
A couple other points is all of that staffing is being applied to schools. None of it is being applied to support facilities. So none of you.
Because I see you in the red up there for both.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
I am very adept at taking out my own trash, vacuuming my own carpet, doing whatever it takes.
Well, which is, you fall in the same superstar category out there with.
Well, thank you. That's very kind of you.
Thank you, but thank you for doing all that you guys are doing and throughout the district.
And we will periodically keep you updated on our progress and the success of this program.
I recognize in your department, the loyalty, you have some of your people, a lot of you, if not all of them. They work extra, they do all kinds of stuff. And the one guy who, who, but been in the district like a thousand years since, since the dinosaurs, they're in the, in the distribution area. He, he's been, and he came back to help you. That just speaks volumes to your leadership.
Yep.
And I just want to recognize that.
Thank you.
And I do want to wrap up the facilities to Dr. Bankus's earlier comment of some of the challenges we have. We take great pride in the buildings that we have and work very diligently and with great intent to ensure that we are presenting a safe and respectful and quality learning, teaching and learning environment. I have been impressed inside of every building. We do certainly have some curb appeal challenges. I know we're all thankful for the monsoon of the last couple of weeks. I don't know how thankful I am because Brown is. I don't know how thankful I am because brown is easier to cover up than green coming up out of cracks in the sidewalk faster than we can take it down. But we understand that our staff, our students and our community do want to feel valued in the buildings that we're in. And we're doing the best that we can with the hand that we're dealt. And I don't ever want a moment to go by for anyone to see, think that we don't believe that our students and staff and families deserve best. And we're doing the best with what we have right now. We're very proud of what we do as a district for that.
I'll echo that. I mean, thank you for doing what you're doing, your team and the custodial staff that are doing what they're doing. As the beginning of the school year comes and the focus is on increased enrollment as parents are visiting our open houses. That's one of the things that what Superintendent Gall is talking about, that curb appeal is going to matter. But the things that you did at Martinez, taking away that landscaping and putting some landscaping out there with zero scapeing, that looks really attractive. And maybe we can do something similar and probably you are at several of our schools. At least if the lawn is mowed and the weeds are taken care of and it looks appealing as we walk in through the front door for the parents and the buildings are clean.
And it's a very cooperative agreement, a synergy of effort between what my staff does and what the building management staff does. So, you know, we get the big areas outside the buildings. The building managers and their techs get the, right next to the front door. We're trying to help them as best we can by give them those things that are easier to maintain, I guess, is the best way.
The last question I had on this was heating ventilation as the schools start. That's when sometimes an air conditioning breaks down and then we get emails from parents and board members. How are we, is that for most part checked and ready to go?
We are in the best condition to start a school year that we've been in my three years. Now, a lot of that is because of one individual. We were able to steal a foreman from another school district that is doing preventive maintenance and that is going great. I've got one other slide to show you, success of transportation. Declining enrollment, declining staffing, we had to reinvent transportation this year. We threw out every routing that we did previously and we routed the entire district. So, what you see there is an example of the Doherty routing system for the mornings. We expect seventy-four drivers to return this year. We did a end-of-year survey with them on what their intent is. We know we won't have quite seventy-four because life will have gotten in the way. But with the six that we have in the HR process, the ones that we're getting into the, through these recent hiring fairs, we should be good. The success there is that I have covered drivers that will not be driving necessarily on a daily basis. And so, my office staff can actually do their day jobs and not have to drive. That is huge. That'll reduce our stress quite a bit. Finally, the last thing I have for you is our yellow readiness is at ninety-six percent. Supply chain is hitting us on automobile parts, just like it's hitting us everywhere, place else. We've had one bus that we've cannibalized three times and use the fuel filter on other things to include a food nutritional services delivery truck. So, you'll see extra buses out in the yard right now. We're not gonna get rid of them because I don't know when the supply chain issues are going to resolve themselves. And so, I'm gonna use them as an additional resource. So, that's all I have for you this evening. Any other questions?
So, thank you. Over the summer, all the work that you guys have done, your department has done and the people at our school buildings who have stepped up and doing just to get ready for the school year. And I've seen that happen. I've seen principals are scrubbing the sidewalks in front of the school buildings and picking up the school. So, yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Is this on Word docs, this presentation?
It is now.
Okay.
It is now.
Good. Thank you.
Okay.
We're gonna transition over to an HR update, but I just kinda wanna frame what I see as this power of us leaning in together to cover our hole. As I arrived early in July, I've been working with Phoebe and her team to understand what some of the staffing challenges were, both at administration level of buildings centrally and then, of course, with our teachers and our ESP staff in the buildings. We reached a loggerhead about a week and a half ago where we were looking at some of the numbers and the school team was very concerned about a handful of schools. And we approached HR and said, how do we get another hiring fair opportunity? And we leaned in together where I would say all parties felt overstressed to cover that hole alone. And we came up with four mini fairs that we hosted at Swagard, Mann, Holmes and Doherty over the last two nights and had a hundred-plus candidates from each night. So, that's two hundred-plus candidates, there's probably some repeats in there to cover everything from certified teaching positions to ESPs as well. And so, it was led by the area superintendents who had their schools and their clusters of schools at those sites. So, it was regionalized in a way that we were building team and community within the space. And I was at two different locations. I know many of the other staff visited as well. The feedback from candidates, number one, was we wanna come back to District Eleven because the work that District Eleven does is much more important than how they feel that the work is in the other districts that they're working. They see the vision of where the heart of the city. They wanna celebrate the diversity that we bring and they wanna be part of a solution to ensuring that the next workforce for Colorado Springs is ready under their watch. So, that was great. And then, secondly, the schools felt uber-supported. And school leaders were saying to me, this is phenomenal. I'm here in my community, hiring in my community, with my community. You didn't try and make this a one-size-fits-all hiring fair that everybody has to go to some location that, you know, maybe twenty or twenty-two-five minutes away that's disconnected from their needs. So, I wanted to applaud Phoebe for her flexibility in bringing her team from a very busy schedule two weeks before school start to find three hours at four different locations. And then, to the area superintendents for telling us what we needed to do and then having their team show up to actually conduct the interviews. Phoebe?
And if I can jump in, I think Devra probably walked out.
Yes, thank you.
I was at the Doherty Job Fair yesterday and there was so many people out there, active participation and talking to some of the principals. They said the same thing. The turnout was better than what they expected. And I also wanted to thank Devra because she's been talking to the media and spreading the word around in short turnaround time. And it looks like every day we are getting an update from Devra that she's talked to this media, this media. There was KKTV outside Doherty too and some other reporter out there. So, for spreading the word around. So, thank you.
Did you say that you can, you guys put this together in like two weeks? It was not planned two weeks ago?
No, we put this together in.
A week and a half.
Like it wasn't on the calendar over a week ago?
No, no.
That's crazy.
That's why.
Good job, everybody.
Yeah, and to get that tied up. And it was well-covered on social media. People shared it and.
Good job.
And the turnout was good. Hopefully, you get some good hires from it.
Correct. And you know what, like Mr. Gall said, lean in, we leaned in, okay? Walking around, you know, the gyms and where the event was located. We had staff members saying, wow, this is like speed dating. And that's exactly what it was. It was speed dating, you know? We had candidates coming in and actually going to the tables where there was an interest, where they had openings or they didn't have openings, just sitting down, having a conversation. So, it was a good opportunity for some good community involvement and FaceTime with principals and staff members in buildings. So, the data that Carrie and her team quickly compiled for me, there were two hundred and twenty participants that registered. Overall, for the two days, seventy-five participants at Doherty High School on August second, thirty-eight participants at Holmes Middle School on August second, forty-seven participants at Swagard Middle School on eight-one, fifty-five participants at Mann Middle School on eight-one. So, that speaks to, you know, the marketing and all of the, you know, the D-11 splash and hey, here we are, come see us, we're open and we wanna talk to you, right?
So, in that gym at Doherty, were there also principals from the feeder schools?
Yes.
Yes.
And so, they interviewed teachers who were interested in their schools. So, they oughta, I think that's a great idea. They get a chance to see who the principal is, see what the philosophy is, see what.
They had principals, they had a couple of teachers from that school, ESP staff interviewing people, so.
It was great to see the vertical continuum of communities really build amongst our own schools for them to be sitting next to one another in a way. And it really communicated strongly to candidates because some candidates are hyper-specific about wanting to work closer to where they live. And so, then you got five elementary schools, two middle schools and a high school all knocked out in one hour and a half fair and didn't have to wait in line to find out that it was a school fifteen, twenty miles away from where you live. So, it's great.
And in addition to that, the four-year entryway over at Human Resources today, I came back at one o'clock and it had exploded, people everywhere. So, you know, Carrie's team, they had to go get laptops and just grab a laptop, sit down and let's help you fill out your application because that was a requirement. Get your application filled out so that you, so that your name can get immediately to the site where you sat and had that, you know, that conversation where you told those individuals, those staff members, hey, I wanna be a part of your team. So, yes, that was exciting today. Carrie, you have any fans that?
Well, let's just get, we gave a huge shout-out to Devra when she stepped out. We wanted to make sure that you heard the acknowledgement. President Elpackham certainly picked up some of my thank yous. But really, since my arrival, Devra has just done a marvelous job in getting our message and our voice out consistently. And the fact that we turned in one week to get the amount of candidates that we did says that if you don't believe in social media, you should because it works. And we'll expand that and we'll start.
Right. I mean, this morning, I woke up to my daughter saying that, hey dad, we are on TikTok or something. And then I saw Mr. Joyner out there like on TikTok video and what you guys put together. So, I mean, that's great that you like.
I didn't dance.
Right, Phoebe, go ahead.
Okay. And to add on to that, Carrie, do you wanna add something else to that? Okay. And then to add on to that, starting tomorrow, which is Tech Day for our, some of our new incoming teachers and SSPs. There are fifty-nine individuals that are registered for tech training. And this is a collaboration between Professional Learning Instructional Technology Library Resources and Curriculum and Instruction to allow those teachers to have their device in their hands, have access to school resources. So, when they roll into their classrooms, they're ready to start first day, ready to go. So, for those individuals that were unable to make that August fourth date, there will be opportunities for those teachers to get that additional training. And we're paying them a two hundred dollar stipend for their time, okay? To show up and get that training. But starting New Teacher Orientation, August fifth, eighth and ninth, we will have one hundred and forty-five individuals that will be participating.
Yay.
Teachers.
Yes, new teachers. Yes, new teachers. So, this is exciting. And of course, it will be a hybrid model and an in-person model because you know, we'll never go back. But we are meeting our teachers, our incoming teacher staff where they are and meeting their needs. So, we're really excited about that. All right? So, you read the data about the D-11 vacancy updates. Carrie has been providing those weekly. And on the slide, okay, and I'm not gonna read this slide to you because I'm pretty sure you have reviewed it. Teacher, we have a hundred and twenty school-based vacancies as of July twenty-ninth, ESP vacancies, but.
But those numbers are hopefully lesser.
Oh, yes. Right, because here we are, August third. And right, Carrie and her team are still getting the data into the system, reaching out, contacting teachers. Carrie, go ahead.
Yeah, so these numbers are going to improve significantly in the next two weeks just because, again, we're focusing on getting those offers out, processing candidates, prioritizing what we need to get in building. So, we're definitely working on that and anticipate those will change in the next two weeks.
Okay. And of course, we have the targeted schools. In actuality, a couple of these schools, the numbers, the average teacher fill rate by FTE numbers are better. But we do have a very strong, solid laser focus on Mitchell High School, Mann Middle School, especially because they are below the targeted eighty-plus percent teacher fill rate. So, we're working very hard to make sure that those schools have an effective teacher standing in front of the students when we open those doors on August sixteenth.
We have contingency plans for every school as well on long-term subs. And the strength of, we've seen a lot of demand from retired teachers being able to come back into the system. And the area superintendents each have their own schools as Phoebe alluded to, priority ones. And we're conversing regularly to make sure that we're meeting that. I think the other good news is we didn't see a lot of resignations in the last week that we had forecasted that we might because this is kinda that trade-off time of the year where people hold that to the last minute. So, we're feeling very good about the mini-events that we did the last two nights. We will have a recruiting booth at Gary Berry Stadium on the eleventh, which will be a little bit broader. Of course, that is a mostly internal celebration for a hundred and fifty, but we are broadcasting that there'll be hiring opportunities there as well. We are all salespeople for the district.
Brand ambassadors.
You are definitely the chief of comms.
So, do you have any questions for us?
The slide where you say that you have as of July twenty-ninth, for example, it was like twenty-two new school-based leaders. Is that since the end of the school year or when is that time period?
That's what we did all summer long. It was a marathon hiring. Thank you, area superintendents, because they were sitting in those rooms. Mr. Gall, Dr. Glennich, Dr. Thurman, and that was it. It was marathon hiring all summer. Okay.
I was just curious, long time period.
Yes.
That's like a high number, twenty-two?
Yes, and we do have the list. Yes, right.
So, that does include assistant principals as well.
Right.
And we had several internal promotions. And so, there are some dominos in there. But, you know, we will acknowledge that teacher turnover and leader turnover is a consistent challenge. We hope to stabilize that. People stay in systems because they believe in the vision of governance and leadership, which I'm confident now the board has solidified itself on their priorities. You've hired a new superintendent who has a new staff. I think we have greener pastures coming forward. But, you know, that is certainly a challenge because as you peel that back, schools that lost principals or high-performing assistant principals were also the last to be able to fill all the teacher vacancies. And so, that domino is something that we see and that we are forecasting. I have challenged Phoebe that we will be the first to hire our principals in El Paso County next year to make sure that we can solidify our contracts with our leadership such that we can stem those dominos from impacting where we are on August third, thirteen days before school starts.
And that reminds me, even going back to the one plan with all the new school leaders that we have hired and some of them are stepping into this role as a school leadership for the first time. We just need to, and it goes back to the area superintendents, we just need to make sure that these school leaders are being supported and mentored so they are set up for success as we go on. You know, that they get up to date with their one plan for their school so they know what they're doing. So, in the past, we've struggled to provide that kind of support for new school leaders that are stepping into there. Sometimes we throw them in the deep end of the pool and figure it out.
Yeah, and so, what didn't get communicated in the MIS conversation was the communication to the team has been this is the year that we overwhelmed with supports and training and opportunities to succeed. And so, in that vein, new teachers, new school leaders, new APs have to have extra supports provided by not just the area superintendent, but the entirety of the system. We're not here to evaluate our way to higher performance. We're here to support ourselves towards higher. We're not here to evaluate our way to higher performance. We're here to support ourselves towards higher performance. In the same way that when a student needs extra supports, the district has always leaned in as hard as it can to get those supports. So we wanna treat our adults the same way.
Yep. I, I think we made some phenomenal principal hires. I've run into a couple of them, uh the Freedom Principal, I just talked to her before this, this. And uh she seems like she's super excited and super enthusiastic, already put together a community event.
She did, and at that community event, uh she was actually able to bring in a couple of cross-boundary um uh enrollment.
Yeah.
Because she helped hosted a community event probably before a neighboring school did. And the family liked what they saw and we had, what's, somebody help me, what's the name of the egg-crashing um STEM program?
PLTW.
PLTW, which stands for.
Project Lead the Way, sorry.
Project Lead the Way, thank you. We are, we're all still learning each other, thank you. Uh but they were there and the kid, you just couldn't get the kids out of the room. All the kids wanted to do is build a little Lego cart and try and safely crash their egg at the bottom of a ramp. And I mean, parents, I saw parents trying to pull kids out of it, and so, and that was great. And so that's an experiential learning opportunity that we hope to be able to expand into all of our schools. Uh but it certainly sells very well from an enrollment perspective.
Yeah.
And it didn't hurt that the Air Force Falcons were there as well. Cause they are the Freedom Falcons.
So has, I know your guys' heads are probably spinning still since this got thrown together so quickly with the hiring fair. But is there any ideas about doing it again in the spring? I mean, I'm thinking about people graduating from college.
Definitely.
And let's get, you know, as, cause people would want, probably wanna be hired sooner than later and not wait till August.
And that's exactly what uh Carrie and her team and I were talking about, yes. Uh even the area superintendents, the uh principals of the buildings that participated, they loved it. They loved it and I even, I was talking with Darren about it, I said, okay, next time they're gonna up their game. I mean, we're gonna see, you know, probably dancing across the front of the table, come over here, flowers, I mean, yeah.
So, so we will probably host another one and come this spring.
Yeah, so just a little context, um so we were actually ready to do a job fair, um like this type of um model. Um right in March of twenty twenty, so.
Wow.
We actually had all the templates and, and uh process ready to go, so we were able to put it in action. Um hence the four days, I think it worked out well, so you know, we had it ready to go. It was just making sure we could coordinate it across four locations, so.
Gathering people as well.
Um so we definitely are interested in the spring and our summer job fair.
Okay, moving on, do you have any further updates?
Yeah, I know, I would've just tied into the enrollment numbers that David already started to brief. We're, we, although exits are a lagging indicator, we are in the positive right now. Um as more permits in than permits out, we hope that that continues. Um we already shared the pre-K strategy and that we are open for business where there is excess capacity. Uh but I do think the strength in messaging, uh the stability of the board over the last several months and the hiring of a new team. I do feel that the community is starting to be responsive and see that District eleven is ready uh and uh and open for business, so we're excited.
So I have a question for you, David. Uh in the enrollment projections that came out in March or April. You were projecting that we are going to be, I think, five hundred students less than last year's October count. Do we have kind of an update? Is that what we are still projecting that we are going to be five hundred students down? Or are we looking like we are going to break even to last year's count or maybe even go a little bit higher?
We, we are still holding to those projections just because they're most conservative and we built budgets around them.
Okay.
Right now, it looks like probably, probably break even. But we really wanna wait until those first, you know, whites of the eye counts.
So when you say break even, break even to uh last year's October.
Till last, till last year.
So then we, we are going to be plus five hundred compared to the projections.
That is what it's looking like.
If everything, everything works out.
With caveats all over the place, it's driving people, it's all crazy.
Yeah. Yeah. I know.
But it's, it is looking like that. In some cases, there's looking like there's a bounce right now, waiting for those withdrawals to come through. And then prob- probably go even. My guess, my guess is that we will come in better than that, than that projection. I'm pretty confident on that. But um uh just look, just really depending on those, those first few weeks of school to get a real count on where people are at. I do think just generally, the movement seems to have calmed down from last year where we were still coming out of real significant COVID conditions. And there was still so much movement, homeschool, not homeschool, kindergarten, I'm gonna wait. A lot of that seems to have calmed and so we should have a better projection, so.
And even in your update, it seems like some schools are plus, uh like McAuliffe is plus sixty.
McAuliffe is moving, yeah.
Yeah, and then uh s- same thing with uh Freedom, I think, and Rudy, so all those are positive uh things.
Rudy's doing, yeah.
The move towards centralized enrollment office is critical for us to really understand these numbers and to be able to have this conversation. And I also think it's much simpler for families to understand how to navigate. We did not cut the tie to the connectivity of the school, so it's not like schools are eliminated from the process. It's just the burden of the work falls on the subject matter expertise that we can centralize. And so that kind of give and take has been very beneficial. I personally escorted several families from the front door, cause they'll show up here at the front door, even though we have all the scientists' enrollments over here. And when I walk them over there, they, they just, they walk in, they love the building, the processes. Um it might not be simple, but it's, it's simpler. Um you know, and, and I'll just give my own experience. I went to DMV three times to actually get my car registered and get my license plate, my new. Uh driver's license, even though I went to the webpage each time and I was missing something or another thing. We're not having that problem because we're communicating with much uh more clarity uh uh on what is the expectation. So the feedback, I think, is strong. And so having families be able to enroll the first time they come here. Remember, when you make the commitment that says I'm getting in my car to take my son or daughter to the school district to enroll them. If you miss that first putt, you're in a lot of trouble. And so we're getting a lot better on that first putt, so I appreciate David's team and the board's decision last year to actually help fund that kind of initiative.
And with the, that's good news if some schools are going to be higher enrolled. Are we going to be responsive enough if a school needs an additional FTE?
We have already made those posts and hopefully hired several of them just in the last two days.
Okay. Okay.
And so I have promised um uh uh school leaders that if they can bring them in, we will find the teachers to do it.
Yeah.
We will send central office staff there to teach those classes. We cannot be a district of decreasing enrollment that gets in our own way of solving that.
What, we don't want a classroom with thirty kids in the classroom.
Right.
At elementary school and then parents start pulling the kids out, saying, I don't want my kid in a kindergarten.
That's right.
So I'm glad that we are being responsive and not having to wait till middle of September to uh provide that additional FTE for the schools that they need. Thank you. Uh any further questions on the board, from the board on the.
I have questions on back to school. Uh it would now be a good time or are we?
Go ahead.
Okay, so I just wanted to know like COVID protocols, do we have that easily accessible for families on websites and things of. My kid just came down with COVID, what does that mean? And do we have a plan in place, say a mom gets it, but the kid doesn't have symptoms?
Yep, so I'm gonna introduce Valerie who just took over our student uh wellness and success department. And she's gonna give us an update on that.
Oh, thank you.
Hi, great segue, thank you so much.
Welcome.
And congratulations on stepping up into this new role.
And she should look familiar, former Title One Director as well for the district.
Now we have a Title One Director vacancies, so.
Uh but we have uh have strong applicants and are hopeful to fulfill. Anytime we have an opportunity to have strong, uh successful members of our team take on more responsibility. I'll always have, I'm always happy to have to backfill the, the piece behind there, so we're happy to promote from within.
Thank you, good evening.
So you are the no, new COVID czar then, taking the title from.
I'm hoping we won't need to be at the czar. That's my hope is that you're gonna hear good news from, from me tonight. I do want to acknowledge I am eight days into this position and so I did bring Bobby Leahy, our lead school nurse, and invited her. In case you had questions that I could not answer. Um and also just acknowledging all the work that has been done before this time. Um with Cory Notstein and Kathy Onley and Bobby and all the school staffs that have had to cover each other. And do all those things necessary to, to get us through probably some of the more difficult times. And now we are in a space where we are operating under the same protocols that we've had since this spring. And so following El Paso County um Health Department guidelines and Colorado Department of Health guidelines, we're still in the same place. So business as usual, the good news is we, we do have plans, you know, we've been through some of this before. As far as, you know, how families can know what happens, you know, if my student gets sick. It should be the same thing that they were communicated in the spring. I know some principals have reached out and said, are we in the same place? I'm like, yes, and here's where you can find that. We are still reporting positive cases if we hear of those. But um really, it's the, the same protocol of if you have a positive case, you're gonna be isolating for five days. If you um are exposed and you're vaccinated and you have no symptoms, then you're free to, to come to school. It's when you have it in the same household that it gets a little more detailed, so um.
And we will do a mass communication on that, can we get maybe a ribbon on um the webpage? To be able to ensure that families have the information. But I do think one of the examples I wanna highlight is what we talked about in enrollment. That we've kind of pushed over where we, the protocol's in place, we're solving for staying open and being able to provide services. Um and I think that's consistent through much of the community. People still have choice to be able to wear masks if, if they're not comfortable in those environments. Uh but we're, we're doing everything we can to stay open and provide the services that the district is um hoping to be able to provide starting on Tuesday.
Great, so can you give me a little bit more detail on in the case where it is a household and a stu- a family member of a student? I can't remember.
Okay, I'm actually gonna let Bobby get into that detail.
I know it very well. So if your son is, say, a student at Doherty High School and he tests positive for COVID. All of your children have to stay home unless they are vaccinated. If they are vaccinated and have no symptoms, they can continue to come to school. If they're not vaccinated, they do fall into a automatic ten-day quarantine. That is based upon the fact that you have a positive student in your home. That's different compared to a student, let's say your son is positive and there's a classroom full of kids, five of them are not vaccinated. They can, they're out for five days and then they can come back. With that non-vaccinated status. If they're vaccinated, of course, they can come. There, the household is contained, you have potential to be exposed every single time you're with your, your student, right? So they do a five-day quar- isolation, period five-day isolation on the positive case. The student who is not vaccinated and not having any symptoms has to stay home those five days. And an additional five days to see if they break through with any symptoms. At the end of those five days, they can return. This is the only time except for maybe some athletics where they're going to be required to wear a mask. So if I'm positive, I stay home for five days, I come back on day six. I have to wear, I must wear a mask for the next five days. That gets us through that ten-day period when I have the potential of spreading that illness.
Even if, even vaccinated after five days, we're still gonna make them wear a mask?
Anyone who has, well, no, vaccinated students, they do not fall into that. They're kind of absolved from that because hopefully the vaccination is going to hold through and they will not become positive. Right, they won't get sick. So they don't have to wear the mask.
It's just the positive case.
It's the un, the positive case or an unvaccinated student who is in the home of a positive case.
Uh but after ten days, they can come back with no, no mask.
Correct.
Is this all based on El Paso County Health Guidelines or CDC or where?
So we follow El Paso County, who gets their guidance from CDPHG, which is the Colorado Department of Health. Who gets all of their guidance from the CDC.
Okay, so like the wearing a mask, how when you come back, that's all part of it?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Okay, so I know there's another district in the area that didn't follow any of that in the last few years, couple of years. Uh is there any talk, do we have that conversation of going that route?
Yeah, I, I don't think, I think it's unnecessary.
You know, I'm just thinking, and I'm not, I'm not, I'm trying to stay neutral here. I'm just trying to address that there are different ways that it has been handled. And so, you know, wanting to keep our kids in schools, if a sibling doesn't have symptoms and they're not vaccinated. Can they continue to come to school, just knowing that another district in the area has operated that way? And it seemed like it went okay. We didn't have, they didn't have any student or teacher deaths, you know, that sort of thing. I'm just putting, putting the topic out there for conversation. I realize it's all a topic.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm not, I, I think our policy is unnecessary.
Yeah, my concern is that we're taking children, parents who have made the choice of vaccination or not. And almost making those that have been non-vaccinated to suffer longer and miss more school. When in, when Pfizer released documents saying that the vaccine was only twelve percent effective and after the first week it was less than one percent effective. So vaccination or not, our kids should not be missing school. Mask can be a choice, vaccine can be a choice, but if we can choose to not force absences as a result of it. By saying, hey, we as a board don't wanna follow everything, um I would like us to look at that as a board decision. For the sake of our kids being in school, that's a period, stop now.
And, and the vaccination doesn't work, so then you still get infected.
Okay, any other thoughts on this?
Do, do we have any, uh, do we have any numbers? Um how many kids at the last week or month of the year? And um are we tracking then at the start of the school year?
So I.
Just wanna understand the size of the problem.
Right, so last year we had a dashboard that had every single case that was reported to any school. Or I think that that dashboard also included all of our cases for staff members as well. I don't know those numbers, Kathy Onley would know them, I'm sure she could gather them. I know that our cases were high and low, high and low. We had extremely high cases in November, December and January of last year. And that did fall dramatically in March, April and May. May, we had this funny pocket where we had some more, like a little bit of a rebound. We were all kind of surprised, what happened, what happened? Because we were getting more calls, but um they were much, much better, probably just true of what's going on in our community. I'm sure you guys have heard, I don't know, maybe I'm the only one who pays attention, but our numbers have been up. I think we're on a downhill progression right now, but.
Well, the paper reports that we're down to fourteen hundred positive cases in the last week. And the death rate for um folks who have um been impacted by COVID is in the single digits and below fifty. Hospitalizations are in the three hundred range. So it has been a downward trend for months now.
The hospitalizations have been, we did have a peak over the summer in um new cases. Because of the new variant that's out there, that everyone seems to be.
Sure.
Just speaking personally, our family had one COVID case for two years and every single person in my family has had COVID over the last three weeks. So I don't, except for me, so I don't know how to explain that, except that we're all partying a little harder and not wearing our masks, I guess. But I'm, I'm hoping that we don't have a lot of COVID cases.
Well, and I'm wondering, you know, again, I'm not, I, I'm unleashing the ball.
No, you started it, so.
I know, but it's something we have to talk about.
You're not, you started.
You know, is it something that we can meet in the middle where um a sibling, if they have no symptoms and have a negative test, that they can come to school? Something like that, like I'm, I wanna keep kids in school and it seems it's hard to say that a child who is healthy can't come to school. So can we meet in the middle? I just know I've heard of other companies operating that way of. If I were to get sick, my husband, I'm just using our family as an example. My husband can still go to work if he has a COVID, a negative test, and so he has to test every morning, you know? So if families are willing to do that, just is there a way we can keep kids in school is kind of where I'm coming from. It would be great.
Okay, uh the.
That's a good question, would we provide that um desperately?
This is a policy thing, so we're not submitting anything.
Right, but, but the feedback from, you know, uh Director Artas are handpicked, so I'll listen to her. But the feedback from the board is that if we are going to be turning around student growth and student achievement and the focus is. Getting the students caught up from two years of COVID and minimizing those learning gaps. We got to keep our students as much as possible in schools because once they are quarantined and sent home for ten days, then it's a learning curve. And it's behavior issues too, when they come back to schools, we got to recondition them back to a classroom atmosphere. We've gone through this for the. We've gone through this for the past couple of years, so the focus is that we need to keep our kids as much as possible. But what you can do in as the superintendent in keeping our sk- kids safely in our schools. Uh I think that's what the board is advocating for now, going into the N D and the details as to what it is uh for. A family does, those are the things that you guys can figure out that. But the focus is as much as possible, keep our school buildings open, don't close our schools. Now, this can even. What if five teachers get sick, then we are we, you know. Do have resources to staff to keep the schools moving.
Right.
Um but that seems to be the thing, Director Art, you have uh some comment?
Yes, thank you. So we as a board task have left the management to the superintendent. We are not trying to negotiate the science. We leave it to our superintendent and our wellness people to determine the best path forward. Not everyone is able to get. Vaccination. We need to consider our most vulnerable students, some of whom probably aren't in our schools right now because of a lack of masking. It it just seems to me like this should not be policy, that this should be something we entrust to the people who are gonna look up the science and follow it. So, you know, we can. And and if we think we need to make policy around this, then I would prefer we do it another evening. I realize we're talking about back to school, but. We we I don't think anybody else signed up for this conversation tonight, so with regards to people's time and knowledge. Um I would respectfully request that we turn that to our superintendent and move on. I agree with you completely. We need to keep our kids in school as much as possible, but.
Yeah. And that's the overall guidance to you Superintendent Call?
I don't agree with that at all.
What's that?
I don't agree with ab- abd- abdicating my authority to the superintendent. He's no more qualified meditator than we are, so um and.
So if we need to, if the board, the will of the board is that we need to revise this and this has to be a board policy, like what Director Art talked about. We can have this discussion and maybe we can uh wait a couple of weeks for school and see how things are progressing. Maybe we can get a report periodically as to how many students are being sent home or quarantined. If it becomes a major issue, uh then we can collectively revisit as a board at that point in time. But the guidance is keep our buildings open, keep our uh uh our students as much as possible and with that. It's up to you. You run the schools on a day to day basis, so. Okay?
Okay.
Is that good for right now? Okay, um any other back to school report that you have, sir? Okay, quickly, uh power school is that last year we had several problems with it as an up and running power school. Anybody that can comment?
Uh Director of Technology, everybody's not here for the update, but we've been working diligently. We got the rollover done. The transcripts are flowing, the communications to schools, so as I know it, we are as best, as good as we have ever been and we are working. Uh Power School is working well with us to overcome these shortcomings that we've had in the past.
Okay, and then maybe Miss Call back and answer this because you were the one that answered this to me when I asked you the previous time. The Green Act, uh teacher requirements kindergarten to third grade, they all had to take some type of letters testing or whatever it is. And uh how close are we to?
Absolutely close.
It is a huge win thanks to the work of Christie Feldman. We are down to eight teachers who have not yet met this requirement.
Awesome.
And principals are working to uh change grade levels so that those eight uh teachers are not teaching K through third grade.
Okay, that's like from, we had like five hundreds teachers or something like that.
Every K three teacher in the district. I don't know how many that is, but they all.
Right, yeah, yeah, I'm glad, I'm glad, I you know, uh that has funding associated with it. I'm glad that all our teachers are are close enough, so.
Yes.
Okay, um. Moving on. Uh we do have one more item on the agenda, which is Board of Education and Superintendent Communication. So um uh this is something I wanted to bring it up and we can carry this conversation on to um. The board retreat that that we are planning on having in the third week in August. Uh in the superintendent contract, there is a specific language that says that no later than August thirty first. The superintendent and the board will meet to discuss and agree on the process and procedures on how they will communicate and work together. So um uh as far as past practices goes, I can share that and uh. If Superintendent Call is good with that, then we can adopt the same practices. Uh board members usually at their discretion choose to meet with you once a month. Uh on meetings, some board members choose to use that option, some board members. Feel like the updates that they get at the board meetings are sufficient enough, so if you are good with that, um that is a way of communication.
Great, great job, Sharon. It's been wonderful so far.
And that of. That's awesome. Um and then um uh in the past, so board members don't go. Way out into the weeds, talking to too many staff members. The way it has been structured is the first layer of people that you have, which are the chiefs and the area superintendents. If board members had specific questions, we could approach them and talk to them. Uh and then if down the line. Like for example, I go and talk to Phoebe and Phoebe says, okay, I need to, you know, you go and talk to.
Tanya.
Yeah, Tanya, then, but I go first to Phoebe. That's the line and then copy you in on the conversation.
Yeah, and I would just, the only caveat I would have to that is clearly there were a bunch of exchanges with David on enrollment. And I've not seen any of those emails, so. What's that?
You're copy.
Pretty sure.
I'm copied, are they in there?
Yeah, it just came today.
Just came today, okay, great.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so as long as I'm C C, that's great.
Yeah, so just to the board, when you are reaching out to the chiefs. Um my suggestion would be copy the rest of the board too. Because uh we need to track what questions are being asked and Marcella does a great job of tracking all those questions, so all of the board members are. Informed too and then copy Superintendent Call. Uh so we know what questions are being asked and if you don't copy, my request would be that when. You respond back, Phoebe, you copy the rest of the board.
Everybody, okay.
Yeah, so we all have uh uh and then we can talk more about it at the board retreat. So I want to quickly move on to that board retreat part. We have um tentatively the board retreat scheduled for the third week in August. Next week, we have a board meeting. A form, a a regular board meeting out here and then the board retreat would be the following week and when I was talking to Superintendent Call, he was talking about. Seventeenth being that Wednesday and some of our schools opening day is on that seventeenth. Uh he was asking if we can look at the eighteenth or the nineteenth. To have that board retreat as opposed to having because all uh hands are going to be uh. At the school level, himself and his staffing too, so and uh. We as board members are also more than welcome to be there at opening day at school, so um if. Our board members available and we are looking at an outside location, one thing that um. Uh Mr. Doggo is looking at is the Pioneer Museum and they have some availability, but. I want to reach out to the board and ask, are you guys open to meeting on that Thursday as opposed to the Wednesday? Uh and what's your availability Thursday afternoon? If that's available.
On the Thursday, August eighteenth?
Yes.
That's another fun balance.
Yeah, and a DAC, yeah, and a DAC meeting.
Phoebe.
Okay.
That was my question is if if the seventeenth is a board retreat, it would be the board and and Superintendent Call.
The superintendent, yeah.
So.
Is that.
It'll make a long for long day for you being at schools and then come to the event if we do like at five. But it won't cast any other, any other people besides our our one employee.
Yeah. Yeah, are you still open to keeping that on the seventeenth if we have it at five o'clock in the evening?
Yeah, I would actually like to go even later, cause I wanna be able, I wanna be able to debrief with the team on how school opening went.
I mean, like six o'clock.
Cause we're doing a dinner Tuesday night as kind of a, you know, a wrap up of how did the first day go and then we would replicate that again the the second day. Um but I, you know, I I work for the board, so as the board directs it, I can certainly have Tamara or somebody else lead the second day review.
Yeah, okay, so.
So why don't we just keep it as scheduled and I'll just curtail my schedule. Now that Tamara's on board and she can pick up presents in the schools uh for for me.
Right. Okay, so do you want it starting a little bit late within five o'clock?
No, let's just go, no, cause I, you know, I'm.
Okay.
Let's just keep it as it's scheduled since that's how the board has built themselves.
Five, let's start at five.
Five to seven?
Five to seven thirty if we can. And the Pioneer Museum, that's the place that the.
On the seventeenth.
On the.
On the seventeenth, right now.
Can we stay at at four? Just four to six, the the um the Air Force uh is hosting a forum to table. Dinner for community leaders that night.
Okay.
And I certainly if I had an invite from the superintendent, I wanna be able to show a face on the seventeenth.
Okay.
So that's from six to eight, so we go four to six as scheduled. Cause the board.
Well, I'm not sure, you know the board Superintendent Call, there is going to be a lengthy discussion out there. If you say six o'clock, I don't know. If you are going to be able to get out of there.
There's a quarter of a quarter.
Yeah, I I as you all need.
So. Right. But is there any appetite in doing this the next day considering?
I'm gonna do six on the eighteenth if we wanted to do a later start on the eighteenth.
Okay.
I have a five o'clock appointment.
At the eighteenth, are we having a fun balance coming into?
Oh, that is the, that's all you need.
On the on the eighteenth, we do whatever we want.
The eighteenth is the fun balance meeting.
Sure.
Okay.
From what time to what time?
Five to seven, yeah.
Five to seven. That's correct, that's.
But there is no uh three o'clock or whatever it is on the eighteenth that you guys are open to?
I'm okay in the afternoon if we wanna do that. I have to be done by five.
Okay. Okay, so are you open? I'm just eighteenth afternoon. Julie, eighteenth afternoon. Sandra, eighteenth afternoon, like around two o'clock or two thirty. So you would be.
Oh, if I'm two o'clock, yes, I can do two.
Two what?
Okay, on the eighteenth, the thirty.
I have two to.
Two, five, let's be on the safe side, two to five, on the eighteenth.
Five.
Okay.
So it was originally scheduled for two hours, now you're scheduling it for three?
Yeah.
I'm just saying two hours, but usually the conversation ends up being a little bit longer, so that's what I'm saying, so just to keep it open, two to four thirty or five.
We like to talk.
Just don't mess with my tea time.
Right.
Alright, two to.
Let's keep it two to five, just in case, so.
Is it working?
On the eighteenth.
On the eighteenth.
She's online with us.
Yeah.
Here?
No, we'll figure it out. Marcella will figure it out.
Hope this.
We gotta ask Darlene's though, so don't book her, okay?
Yeah, on on the Pioneer, most likely Pioneer's Museum, but she.
This is the retreat.
This is the retreat, so there won't be nothing on the seventeenth, instead eighteenth afternoon from two to five.
Okay.
Okay?
Do you wanna ask Darlene?
Can you ask Darlene? So the six of us here are good with the eighteenth, two to five?
Are we gonna eat that day or should we?
Yes, we will eat something out there.
There's no eating allowed.
Okay.
I wanna eat.
So.
That's all, that's all stipages in food. We get paid in.
Yeah. But the eighteenth, two to five, are the six of us okay here?
Okay, yeah.
Okay, can you confirm with Director Daniels?
It's in my calendar.
Okay, so then let's check for availability at the Pioneer's Museum on eighteenth, two to five. So that opens your schedule up for the seventeenth to be there at the thing and then the first day, yeah, all those things.
The school, the role.
So um uh and then if Pioneer's Museum is not available, let's look at other options. And I can have that conversation with you. Okay, so um and that board retreat, we can discuss more about the uh superintendent um. Board relationship sets clear expectations for the beginning of the school year. We can even go back to the. Board priorities and the metrics that were developed and hone in on that and set some clear uh expectations for the first year. Um. On that topic, um uh the last thing I want to quickly, couple of things I want to talk about that um. Uh interest in visiting schools, is there still interest in visiting schools by board members?
Yes.
Okay, uh if so, I'm looking at the six people here, yeah.
Darlene indicated that she has a open availability for the eighteenth.
Good, then eighteen, two to five, that's awesome, so it's uh, we'll just figure out a place, wherever it is. Um so that's when it's scheduled and then if there is Jason. Then you can look into assigning the same way that you did last time, but a new set of schools for each board member.
Okay.
Not the same list that we had last year, so we can rotate the thing and this would be the way I look at it.
Sure. Yeah.
Eight or nine schools that you get, it's going to be for the entire school year, so.
Kind of like area sups have their weekend, you have our set of schools.
Like it, like just like area schools, you are the board representative for that school.
Okay.
And we can communicate that even to the principals through uh Superintendent Call, so. Those schools are also reaching out to you as board members and informing you about the school events that are taking place, so you are directly involved with that school. Now, that doesn't stop Director Art from visiting some other school if there is a school event, but. It's more like you have these eight or nine schools and then you can periodically report to the board um. Through the rest of the year, uh how things are going, so that way we have a board member assigned to every single school. So if you can work.
Did you say based on the areas or?
No.
Like the area superintendent.
Like the area superintendents, my.
Uh exactly.
No, 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 not the exact thing, but you can figure out, you know, rotate the schools and if.
Yeah.
You have specific requests, reach out to Director Chocinson and say, maybe you want to be at a certain specific.
I have one special school, the the teacher wants will you visit him?
Okay, uh.
Hard.
And then um.
Hard, because of my background.
Sure.
Just to emphasize, it would be nice if principals invited, any principal invited every board member.
Yeah.
I mean, it doesn't need to be just your signed board member.
No, I'm just, yeah.
Absolutely.
You are welcome in our schools at all times.
I expect to be, yeah, I expect to be.
Yeah. It is just that, you know, you are in that communication loop for that school and.
You have a little better pulse on uh on your schools to be able to share, be a contact point.
Right, a little bit, you know, and then. Yeah, sometimes if it is fifty schools and each principal is inviting us for fifty events, then it becomes like overwhelming for all the board members. Now you got like eight schools, then if it's Martinez is one of your school, then. I can say, okay, Director Art is going to add in Martinez.
Yeah. You're.
Um Marcella, I know that you sent us a list of open houses that are coming up. That's the updated list, okay, so if you get a new list, so I think board members have a list of open houses that are coming up in the next couple of weeks. So you can look at that and uh.
So are you gonna send a new list, thought you said?
It it's updating every week, the open houses.
Yeah, can you, yeah, send a new list and.
Okay.
Principals just came back this week and so.
Yeah.
Um we have given them the uh idea that if you host an open house, you will. Perhaps bring in more enrollment, so we are seeing them add open houses as quickly as they can.
Okay, so if.
Isn't there a list?
Yes, there is.
Yeah, there is a list, I think Marcella already sent it to us in June. If that list gets modified or she can resend it to us.
Yeah.
If that list gets modified and new open houses are added, then she will update it and send it accordingly, um.
Oh, no, um so this is the first day for.
Couple other things quickly, um talking to Marcella. She wanted me to reiterate again that. Uh to make, I was talking to her about how to make her job a little bit more efficient and how the board can help her out. So one of the things is that if an email comes from Marcella. Requesting board response, then let us be responsive about that and get back to Marcella within three days, so she will, we are not holding it up. Uh second thing with um the board member reimbursement, we have an allotment right now allocated about. Twenty five hundred dollars for every board member, so uh last year we had at least one board member go about that twenty five hundred dollars, so. There was some pressure Nelson had to move some money at the last minute, so and then talking to um. Marcella, she also said that when you have board members traveling and uh going to conventions and things like those. That twenty five hundred dollar budget is not sufficient, so I want to get the pulse of the board. Is there interest in increasing that board member allowance, yearly allowance from twenty five hundred to thirty five hundred and there is money in the board budget? So that way we have enough money allotted per board member. In case of reimbursement and it doesn't fall on pressure Nelson and then each board member knows that they have thirty five hundred dollars. And it was at thirty five hundred dollars three or four years back and.
I think it was three thousand.
Okay.
But prices have gone up, you know, completely, so it's.
Right, yeah, right, three thousand or three, so is there any interest in keeping moving that?
I I don't mind thirty five.
Okay, thirty five. I just, I'm just ga- gauging the board well, are you good with that, good?
You don't have to spend it.
Okay, yeah, you don't need to spend it, are we good with that? That's all I need to know.
And just to clarify again, we have the money in the our own budget, so we're not taking money out of the general fund or anything, it's.
Yeah.
Re-electing.
We have money in the board budget, but going forth next year, it'll be built into the budget where this will be thirty five hundred dollars.
I'm all for it because looking at like a national conference and if you do all of the local Colorado stuff, you aren't really able to afford. You know, so that's for anybody listening and wondering why in the world we'd spend more money on ourselves, it's professional development for the board. And that is something that ideally we would all, you know, support. The, my question would be, if you spoke to next year, if we intend to do this this year, does that require a?
The, my question would be, if you spoke to next year, if we intend to do this this year, does that require a vote for changing the budget? If what?
Does it require a vote for us to change even our budget or is it within our budget? I I you, I understand you're saying it's within our budget and we have it, but do we need a vote to?
Well.
Shift money?
Shift redirect?
Well, we are already shifting money from one budget account, one board budget account to another board budget account. We are doing that to fill gaps, so that's what this would be, moving it from one to another. But if you want a formal board board, I can check and make sure if that is necessary. Do you still think it's necessary when we are already doing?
No, I know that there are certain things the treasurer can just approve and do. I don't know if shifting this much money at a time requires a vote or or if it's not gonna.
Just, we should just look into it, I'm, you know, I think just to be sure.
Okay, sounds good. And the last thing that I want to point out is that instead of waiting till the end of the school year to fill out your reimbursement sheet as board members are talking to board members, I talked to Marcella, it would be easier if quarterly we can fill it out. And the dates that we came up with was, and I will send it to you through an email, October fifteenth, January fifteenth, April fifteenth and then June fifteen, so.
Oh, not monthly?
You can do it monthly too, but what I'm saying is, uh I, yeah, I at least do it quarterly, okay?
Yeah.
At least quarterly.
Okay.
You can do it monthly, I was negligent of this too, like last year when I filled it out, I handed her from January or from November to yeah, May or whatever it is, so this would, so then she has to do all that at once sitting in June. So this way we are responsible, I'll send an email reminder, but if we can do it every three months, at least if you want to do it monthly, that's going to help her. But at least every three months if you are caught up on it, so that's all I have for you guys.
Just just from the board budget, we we gotta discuss um not paying Caspi a penny, not being a part of that organization at all.
I think um.
We just pay.
You don't want to be part of Caspi?
No, I don't.
Okay, Caspi does provide a service, I think we already paid that for this year.
We did.
Yeah, we just approved.
Well.
And how much is it?
Two, two.
Twenty three thousand.
Twenty thousand, what?
Twenty three.
Twenty three thousand?
Yes.
For the whole year.
Took along to Caspi?
Yes, and then you gotta pay for your own seminar out of your budget, it's ridiculous.
I had no idea.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what that is, and.
It's.
So something we already paid, we just paid it this summer for this coming school year, so.
Yeah. Coming year and then this is a conversation the board wants to have, then when we figure out the budget for next year, we can have that conversation. If we want to be part of the group, uh we get free legal advice and things of that nature from Caspi too sometimes. So we don't have to uh use our legal services to always go there because legal, for us, they bill us three hundred dollars.
Although, what's the issue?
Yeah, thank you, but it's a conversation for a different day, okay? Um there is um tomorrow, I mean uh next Wednesday is board meeting, there is executive session right in front of the board meeting. Uh so that uh board meeting will start at four thirty.
Four o'clock? Four thirty?
Four thirty, okay, executive session for one hour and then the board meeting will start at five thirty, okay? And legal will be there to provide advice to the board on some of the Supreme Court uh decisions that took place at the end of last year, um and how that impacts districts, school districts. Uh so uh instead of uh we trying to figure it out or things like that, legal said that they would interpret the super, the Supreme Court decisions and talked to us clearly how that impacts us as a board at board meetings and also the district as a whole, so. So I just wanted to kinda put that on your radar. Uh with that, we are, any other things that you guys have on your mind? Okay, with that, we are officially adjourned at seven sixteen P M. And welcome, that's awesome, yeah? Good, your first meeting and um thank you for being here too and welcome.
Thank you.
Chris, congratulations, thank you so much. I'll thank you guys.